My time. Neil Comer, this is a committee of the whole meeting of the Riverside Board of Education. Marjorie, what do you call the role?
Mr. Brockway?
Here.
Ms. Kleiber?
Here.
Ms. Mangia? Mrs. Morello?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Ms. Murphy?
Here.
Mr. Regan?
Present.
At this time, is there any public comment? There's no public comment, then I turn the meeting over to the Sheri, the education committee.
To the Sheri. Thank you. We have a few presentations tonight from some of our staff members. I first wanted to say it's teacher appreciation week, so of course, you know, they're not here, but I appreciate what they've done for my own family and important job, obviously, for our district, and I think we have a great, great staff. So, thank you to all of them for working hard. Proud of you. Our first presentation is a STEAM plus presentation at Hauser. So if Mr. Smith would like to come up? I'm going to chime in and help him a little bit here and there if he needs to, but he's got this. He's got me.
All right. Thank you, Sheri. So, we're excited by working with Merrill and Sheri to develop a pilot program, encore program for our students at Hauser for next year. It's kind of evolved and changed and has grown quite a bit after doing some site visits at a school, doing a lot of research, looking at different programs that we can use, and just being creative about how we can best fit and reach the needs of our students as they learn today and where they are at in education. I read a great quote that it's looking at combining the left and right brain and making science and math creative and giving students a chance to invent, design, model, and just kind of really reaching students in a way that I don't think we are right now. So, the set would be for, next year we'll develop the STEAM class. So, it's kind of evolved from STEM, which would be science, technology, engineering, and math, to add in the A, which is for art. And so, it's kind of looking at that modeling and building side of the curriculum, which goes really hand in hand, but it's also looking at incorporating that program into our current art classes as well, and looking at different ways that we can enhance that curriculum and kind of build upon it. So, the first thing that we'd be doing is using the IMSA Fusion Program. So, Merrill and April May contacted IMSA, and basically it was an application, and we were selected to infuse their curriculum.
And that came through the Whiskey Consortium, so as a member of Whiskey, and I want to point that out because Whiskey's been very beneficial in a lot of ways, but that's what allowed us to secure the grant for IMSA. Okay, keep going.
So, basically IMSA will provide some professional development for our teacher, and it's 32 to 32 hours of curriculum that they have created and that we can pick from. So, there is about eight different curricular topics, and then we are going to pick one that will fit our sixth graders and one that will fit our seventh graders. The students would go through that curriculum. IMSA provides plenty of support, and so I think it'll be a great way for our first year to kind of have one of the classes already set for the teacher. We are interviewing a great group of teachers right now that have a wide variety of backgrounds, but I think coming into that class to have something that is structured will be beneficial in that process. The focus of that Fusion Program is a lot of hands-on, a lot of problem-solving, critical thinking, collaborating, and working together to solve some problems. And so, it's looking at combining, combining all of that science background, the technologies infused, but even like that engineering. So, the next-gen science standards, there's a lot of engineering standards involved, so getting students to kind of work together and critically think. The sixth grade curriculum will be set, and that will be rotated and repeated for the three trimesters, and then the seventh grade curriculum would be different, and then that would be done through the three trimesters.
And the reason we're not pursuing eighth grade with Illinois Math and Science Academy, which is what IMSA stands for, is because we were only awarded six units, which only allows us to hit two grade levels. So, just so if you're wondering why not eighth, we're limited by what we got in our grant.
Right, so and then with the trimesters, you know, the three, we're repeating it three times, that's how we hit our six. So, these are the curricular options that they offer. Merrill and I spoke, we're basically going to talk to IMSA and with their experience, obviously, doing this to say, what do you feel will be a beneficial sixth grade curricular to follow, curricular area to follow, and then what would be a beneficial seventh grade one? And then kind of look at it and, you know, see what fits us. And then our new teacher would go for some professional development with IMSA as well. So, it's kind of nice that gives us a wide variety of different topics to look at. Also with that sixth and seventh grade curriculum, and I'll show you kind of a map, and it's in the presentation. So, it's, think of it in terms of two sixth grade classes, two seventh grade classes, two eighth grade classes, right? So, one of the sixth grade classes was that Fusion. The other sixth grade and the other seventh grade classes would be kind of this artistic STEAM class, where that gives us some freedom for students to design, model, build, and there's a program called Project Ignite. Don Tofano is looking in it as well for us, and it's basically different programs that we can use for students to digitally build and create. And so, with that creation process, that would also allow us to do some 3D printing. So, if a student creates a model, they can use a 3D printer and then print off what they have created. And on top of that, we will also improve on our computer programming class that we started this year, so that would be embedded into that as well, looking at Scratch and then MIT App Inventor. And then there's also different options that we have. There's some kits that we can use, I just saw one today, there's just a lot out there. But then there's also some circuitry work that you can do online. With that curriculum, this is kind of just some screenshots of different programs. So, up in the top left is that design software, so it's kind of like a CAD design, and then that is where we can go into 3D printing, so kind of looking at what students have created and then having that built for them to use and hold. Scratch is the programming software and then the circuitry. Ultimately, the goal is with it is that kids can create something that might solve an everyday problem, right? They can be creative and think of a new stand for their cellphone, or they can think of a new way to open up, I saw an article, open up a medicine, you know, jar or something, right? So, they can design something and print it, and it could be practical or useful. So, this is just kind of like the curricular map that we kind of put together. So, this would be for sixth grade. On the left-hand side, we have our STEM Fusion, which is 12 weeks, one trimester is 12 weeks in length, and that's where we'd go through the 32 hours of curricular work. We also have the STEM Design and Programming, and that's where we can divide it up equally. This is kind of flexible because we want to see who we hire and the strengths of that educator to see how it works for them. But with it, the thought is to look at some mechanical or electrical engineering, and there's the kits and then the circuitry. The Project Ignite, that's where their 3D printing comes involved with the modeling, and then also the computer programming. And then talking to our teacher, Mr. Singh, looking at different ways that we can incorporate that into their class as well. And you will see that the seventh grade one models this and mirrors this the same way. The goal would be is that as we go along, that will continue to develop. So, what we did maybe for year one, we'll stay at sixth grade, and then we can be creative for the next year to develop a seventh grade and then keep moving forward. For our eighth grade, instead of using Fusion, Merrill and I've started taking a look at Defined STEM, which goes along with Defined Learning. It focuses on basically problem-based learning in the sense that it looks at a particular problem or situation, and students can be creative to solve it. There's schools using this with UBDs, with JMC, there's different curricular reading areas that you could look at. So, basically, we're looking at developing or using this program instead of the Fusion program, which allows students to look at literacy tasks and connecting it to careers. The other class that I thought of is more of like an entrepreneurial or startup-style class. So, one of the pieces of equipment that we're looking at is a carving machine, and it's kind of like a laser cutter, and you can engrave with it or you can cut with it, but the design or the thought of the class would be to develop a, basically, a company, like in your group, and it would be a sign-making company. That would be, that's how I thought of it. And so, students would research different colleges that they can go to for design, for sales, for business, whatever the case may be. And then with it, they will start working on their company, right? They'll make a company name, a logo, they would think of how they can put together a portfolio of work that they've done before, and that could be digital sketches, they could make rough drafts out of cardboard, but basically, they would present, selling different signs to our schools. And those signs could be bathroom signs, they could be hallway signs, whatever the case may be. And then administrators would come in, sit down across from the students, and then they would have a conversation and discussion and almost like a sales pitch. Then the administrator in our district can pick a sign company, and then we would actually print the signs and then hang them in our buildings. So, now they're student-created signs that we have to buy, basically, most years anyways, but now we're going to be printing them, carving them, and, you know, building them so we don't have to buy them from somewhere else. And the students then see their work, you know, around the district and the building. Also, there's different options. These engravers can engrave onto our laptops, they can basically cut and using in art class, they can make puzzle pieces, they could use mobiles, it could be used for a variety of options. But I think having students develop the skills to talk to other people, to have a conversation, to look someone in the eye, to involve the community, maybe where people are in sales, they're in design, that they can give them tips as well. So, this would be the second of the eighth grade classes. So, if you look at-
The other idea Jason came up with too is a way to pull the community in. If there's a need for signage, they'll talk, or the library, or, so we could actually pull community in to be a part of this development process for the eighth grade class as well. So, it could go beyond our doors, which is a real possibility.
Yeah, so then if you look at this map, basically Defined STEM would be on our left-hand side, that would be where we can look at the designing part, that'd be the Defined STEM curriculum with the real-world situations, and then the second class would be the design, the 3D printing, but then also looking at that entrepreneurial class. And then still looking at infusing it within our art class.
Okay, so I'm going to talk a little bit about budgeting and what we're looking at. We sort of built some numbers into our budget anticipating that we were adding this classroom already, so in the numbers that David already has identified in the budget, we had $10,000 that Mr. Tofano had set aside for the hardware of the printing and the printing filament, so we're looking at the filament as more of a consumable year-to-year, and the printer as a more capital purchase. And then we, I, we put aside some $8,000 for just basic curriculum materials. IMSA Fusion is costing us, for training and materials, only $4,800, and it was grant subsidized, so that allows us to really look beyond that in terms of where we're headed. And the Defined STEM pieces are going to be $3,000. Some of the other software pieces are not at a large cost at all, but with Tinkercad and Project Ignite, one of the things Mr. Tofano and Mr. Smith and I have talked about is that we may need to have the parents sign off on the option to utilize it because it is a web-based program, they don't give us a school-specific domain. So, with the security protocols that we're using now, we'd have to have that form that we talked about, that when we don't have the ability to have them sign off on our security agreements, parents would have to be notified and sign off that the children could access that particular program. The carving machine is the only thing at the moment that is going to go beyond what we initially projected as a budget item, so we're, I'm looking at some local grant opportunities to see what we can drum up, and also, we might talk to the Hauser PTO about it as well and see if maybe we can drum up some support there as well for that. We could definitely continue the idea of the class without a final product if we couldn't get the carving machine, but it's something that we put in here as one of the things we didn't initially budget for on the front end because we found it later. And then the finalized curriculum materials, you get sort of the skeleton of where we're headed, we're continuing to vet all possible resources. Jason sat on a webinar today and found another circuitry resource, and so we're going to weigh out all the budgetary constraints within all the different options that we have and fit it into what we're looking to do, so. And like I said, once we identify, he mentioned this already, once we identify the candidate, we want to, we have some that have some background in some of the programs, so we want to match that expertise and not have to retrain if the person we hire has some background. So, that's where we're at. On STEAM. It's a lot, and we got a lot done in the last couple of months, it's exciting. We'll take questions about it at this point. Any questions, anybody?
Could you talk a little bit about this candidate?
Well, we are going to have final interviews tomorrow, so I don't want to-
So, we're down to three candidates for the second interview. It is a wide, it's a wide range of talents, and it's going to be a very interesting interview. And all have some sort of STEM/STEAM experience. So, yeah, I'm very excited about the teacher that we're going to bring here. I'm extremely excited for this program because I think it's preparing our students for the future. You know, they say, it's that saying of we're preparing students for jobs that currently do not exist. And this is a program that is going to reach a lot of students in many ways that we aren't currently reaching them. You know, from that design part, from mixing, like I said, the left and the right side of the brain for that creativity, for the problem-solving, I think it goes well with our Carnegie math model and the collaboration. It's allowing students to think of a problem and try to think of or create a solution to that problem. And Mr. Singh's on board in our art class, which I think is very exciting, and I just thank you for the opportunity to plan it. It's been a lot of fun, and I've learned a lot, and I appreciate Ms. Kleiber's support and sitting down and talking in his problems as well, and I think it's very exciting for Hauser.
The other thing too, we talked about, you know, how it is an encore right now, and so we know it's not in that core curriculum. So, one of the components, that Defined STEM component, that's a project-based learning component, does have some opportunities that we'll be able to sit down with the math department and embed some potential project-based opportunities because the Defined STEM program has connections to both the math, the NGSS, and ELA standards. So, we'll be able to go beyond the STEM program once we get a good handle on it to embed some of the project-based opportunities outside of the STEM class as well with that particular supplemental resource.
That's very interesting, because that was kind of my question, which is, this seems really great.
It's exciting.
I'd love that, I feel like taking the class myself. I don't know if this is the right place to talk about it here or talk about it in the context of the schedule you're going to be presenting, but the way the encore's are done now is that a lot of kids that won't be able to take these, these interesting STEM or STEAM courses, for example, the kids that are taking a language in seventh grade and taking music, for example, they don't have any room for electives. And so, what I'm wondering is that, you know, is there a way to give those kids some exposure to this stuff, which is really great, and what you're saying, it sounds like-
Yeah, through Defined STEM, we'll be able to do some of that.
And as our science teachers progress, looking at next-generation science standards, I think as we go along, their comfort level, as they're training really hard right now to learn those standards, there's different ways that we can embed that and incorporate it. And Mrs. May and I were just talking about the interviews tomorrow and just different ideas, and it's, I think also if we can find a strong instructional leader in this capacity, he or she can work really well with our science teachers and our math teachers as well, and then start pushing that, some of those ideas in, saying like, hey, have you thought about this, you know, strand of the engineering or something like that?
Yeah, we can get a little more interdisciplinary ones.
Right. The exciting thing too is I know it doesn't solve what you were just saying about the, you know, foreign language and the band, but there's, a lot of kids will take both of these classes. And so, that is exciting to me as well, is it just won't be like, oh, you just get one STEM, but out of their three trimesters, they can get, their two out of their three could be in STEM, which I think will be a lot, it will be very beneficial as well. But it can be infused, I think, science and math classes as well.
And then we're going to take a year to study the Hauser schedule next year. We've talked a lot about that, and so through that course of study over the next year, we're going to investigate all the models that are out there, and, you know, Martha was, and Griff were suggesting that the Whiskey Consortium middle school principals meet, and they all have the same issues, right, depending on how their schedules work. And so, there's some creative models out there around scheduling that everybody's wrestling with, I think, with everything that districts are trying to implement, because there's other districts implementing STEM and STEAM and other districts wrestling with new math and new science. And so, I think there's an opportunity just to relook at all different models, to see if we can find more of a rotation model that will allow us to expand. But right now, I think we need that full year to implement, get this solid, and then look at our schedule and see what we can do, because we don't disagree that we'd love to see every kid touched by this program at some point. Any other questions? Well, thank you for your hard work, and that was a lot of research.
Thank you. Merrill, I'm assuming you're going to talk about the Quest audit process?
Yep, yep. And Sheri, I also wanted to just thank Mrs. Kleiber for encouraging us to think outside of the box around the staffing element, because we really drew a much higher quality of Canada than we actually expected, so it's been kind of nice. We've gotten pretty really good files. Okay, Quest. So, way back when in the fall, when we talked about strategic planning, Quest was, Advanced Learning was one of those components of sort of that core, that is embedded within that core review of alignment. And so, we took our first steps around this as we head into next year. We met with our consultant who's going to guide the audit process in April, and we flushed out just like a mission and vision of our work, and we're meeting again in May to put to paper what we currently do, because it's not documented anywhere with respect to matrices and placement. So, we'll make that very public before the end of the school year. One of the things we are considering in making all that public is adding a component at the middle school level with the new curriculum. We may be looking at a placement test that matches Carnegie, because we don't currently have anything like that for our, give it to every fifth grader, every sixth grader, every seventh grader, so we can see where everybody is with relationship to the core curriculum expectation. So, we'll maybe laying that, layering that component in with some of our other standardized tools that we currently have. And then we are going to pull our committee process together at the next meeting as well and lay out what that process will be for next year as we head into a full audit. So, we'll be asking for staff, community, parent involvement in that committee to flush out what we're going to be about as an advanced learning program. So, I just wanted to update everybody because you haven't heard from me about it, it's happening, we just don't have anything formal yet. So, and since we didn't have a June, we're not going to be having a June committee in the whole, I just wanted to update you to that, where we're at. So, that's that. Ready for me to move on to the-
Yeah, unless anyone has any questions about the Quest, we can move on to the teacher evaluation plan.
On the Quest, so what are you going to be auditing?
The whole program.
The whole program from?
Yeah, it starts in third grade, so we're going to look three through eight, because we have two really different programs going on right now. We have a smaller, more gifted-like, and I won't call it gifted because it's not, it wouldn't meet the true definition of that, but a more gifted-like program at three, four, and five, and then at Hauser, we have more of an advanced learner program. So, we need to get alignment, three through eight, around what we stand for as a district who we want to be servicing and how we service them, so.
So, this would include placement-
Correct, everything.
-how students are selected?
Correct. It's going to take us a year of study before we change anything. Okay. Next item? Ready? Let's keep going. It's what happens when we don't have June. Okay, so, as you know, when I got here in the fall, there was a real need to look at our teacher evaluation model in preparation for PARA, the Performance Evaluation Review Act, that we're mandated to implement next year. And we had some great forms that were generated by a committee of staff members, but we were missing the framework around the forms, and so, this whole school year, we have spent the last school year in servicing all of our staff on Charlie Danielson's Framework for Teaching, which is what the evaluation process is based upon. So, everybody got this book and everybody got this book, which were the tools that the committee utilized to develop the framework. So, we had a smaller committee of people working on our actual documentation and our framework, and then we also trained the staff as a whole, the masses. As a result of all that work on the committee, this is now our staff evaluation plan document along with this. Don't get scared, I know, it looks monumental.
You will not read that to us tonight.
No. I'll read it.
Starting on page one.
Next to your bed, and I don't know, in your restroom at home, wherever you put your magazines, next to your couch. Okay, this, you have this in a couple of attachments on your board book. This section is really just the specialist rubrics. So, all of these pages really only pertain to speech, social workers, and psychologists. So, all of, so it's not as daunting as it looks, okay? Then the plan itself, you see how we've outlined it, we've put the philosophical piece is how we're going to measure it. The growth components are now in there, your last addendum that I added were the forms that were developed to document the growth pieces, and those were developed late last week, so I had to add them separately. And now, everything is complete, it would all go to the staff on June 7th on our last institute date. And then this is just the measurement tool for the professional practice portion. So, the professional practice skills get measured against a rubric, which is all contained in here, and the growth gets measured based on student learning. Okay, so, this is what will go to the staff and be rolled out in June, but they've had all the training leading up to it. So, we're ready to go.
I know that sounds like it's no big deal, but it's a great feat to get everyone to agree on the process and how you're going to do it.
And all the common assessments that they've developed so far are all in a Google Drive, and I only have one department left to finish some last pieces, and we're done with the first two pieces of that as well. Exciting.
Questions?
I've got a question. I know that this process started, was started by your predecessor last year. Do you feel like you had enough of a chance to influence it any way that you wanted to before you reached that completed document?
Absolutely. So, here's what happened. When I got here, it was going to be rolled out, it's just a set of forms. And what was missing was all the training around, and Sheri and I talked about, Mrs. Kleiber and I talked about this, the framework training was missing for all staff, they didn't have this tool, and this is what their evaluations are based upon.
There was minimal buy-in, I would say.
Correct, yeah.
Which now we have.
And there wasn't the framework. And once I met with the, I had the original committee that developed the forms last year as my committee, and then we expanded it, we added some more people to it. And once they, I trained them first, and once they got that training, they were like, whoa, we need to back up and reground ourselves. So, we held off on rolling out the new forms, and it'll all be rolled out together.
Thank you.
Are these the same forms that are on the board book, or did you change the forms altogether?
No, the, well, we, you have all new forms in there. Some of them were ones that were originally created, so the observation forms that they created last year are the same. The growth forms are all new.
Ah, okay.
So, that addendum, yeah.
The framework is all new.
Framework's all new.
Got it, okay. Thank you.
And if you want a link to the actual Google Doc, it is, when I roll it out to staff, it's all table of contents driven, so they can just click to where they need to within the document. It's interactive.
So, I have one more question, Sheri. So, this is, this is going to get rolled out to the staff here in the next week or two or so.
It'll, it'll get, they'll get this whole thing in their hands before probably Memorial Day, and then on June 7th, we're going to walk through how it's all put together. But there's reps from every building on the committee that have been sharing feedback along the way throughout the process, so it's not going to be a surprise to anybody.
Okay, and then when does it, when is it officially enacted?
Next school year.
Next school year. And that follows the-
The letter of the law.
That's right.
And that's why the growth assessments, they all have two common assessments now in each department or grade level that they're going to be utilizing to measure the growth that's got to be calculated in the plan for student learning. So, we're starting with two curriculum-based assessments to measure student growth, and all of that growth measurement needs to be completed on a timeline so that the evaluations can be done by March. So, you can't go from fall to G, May, or June, you have to have your assessment period be a manageable one, which is why we're using curriculum-based assessments rather than, standardized ones aren't fair to use anyway, so with them, we recommend it.
Thank you.
Okay. Lastly, we have a middle school philosophy and Hauser schedule presentation.
And we also stuck an extra handout of a sample schedule at your seats. Yes.
Very quickly, just before April starts, has anybody presented to you the difference between a middle school and a junior high? And if you had one question on a test, could you pass that test? Just so you know, there's many buildings that you'll see, like Hauser Junior High, that's really a middle school, and there's middle schools that are really junior highs. So, the name means nothing. What's in front of the school means absolutely nothing, because most people, the average person, has no idea what the difference is. And here's the difference. When children leave fifth grade, a self-contained classroom where a teacher, compassionate teacher from kindergarten through fifth grade looks at the whole child, when they teach math, they're teaching science, language arts, mixed with social studies, interdisciplinary approach is fully, is fully engaged, that's not necessarily the case when you go to some junior highs. Some junior highs are typically very much, a true junior high is a mini-high school. You go to math, you go to social studies, you go to, you know, English class, and never does the, any interdisciplinary- And never does the, any interdisciplinary effort exist. When a true middle school, and the movement is over 60 years old and research supports kids learn better in a middle school. One, they take into account the socio-emotional development of the child. At a time when adolescence hits, the boys are discovering girls, girls discovering boys. They're going through all these changes. And putting them in a mini high school where we ignore their adolescent development is insane. And a true middle school takes that into account. They have an advisory program that's well-developed that addresses social emotional issues. And teachers have plenty of time. So the teaching of math isn't isolated and it's outside of the teaching of science. Math is simply the language of science and should be taught that way. So to me, the true middle school has that interdisciplinary approach and teaches the whole child. However, most middle schools that are named that are not necessarily fully middle schools. And a lot of junior highs are not necessarily true junior highs. So with that introduction, gives you a little backup, and it's 60, it's over 60 years old in the making. And it's, the true middle school is what you should be striving for.
And we're going to be somewhere in the middle right now.
Sorry?
We're going to be a hybrid right now.
Yeah, and right now we would be considered a hybrid, right? So there's the introduction.
Thank you. That's not only an introduction, but the first couple of slides.
Okay.
And done very passionately. But it is, I know both Jason and I feel very passionate about as well. Because when kids hit sixth grade level, you have to teach and educate the whole child. And that goes beyond those instructional content areas. And I feel like we already do a really good job of that here. We're kind of in the middle of the middle. But two of the big components, as Griff mentioned, of a middle school is the teaming aspect and the advisory program. Teaming, it kind of goes with both students and staff. So for students, a middle school team, you can think of it as a school within a school. So even though this is a three-story building with almost 600 children in it, when you have teams of students, it's there, they can identify with their team. So next year, our proposal is that we have students on two different teams. And part of the advisory program, how that works in it, is the first couple of weeks in your advisory class, the teams, the students are talking about what team names do we want to come up with? Let's vote on a team name. They get a team identity. And from that point on, they're referred to as, you know, whatever crazy name the sixth graders, seventh graders, eighth graders come up with for their team. But it builds a dynamic where they feel connected to one another as to their staff. So teaming for students is very important in middle school. The other teaming that's done in middle school that cannot be done on a regular high school schedule or junior high schedule is the teaming of staff members. And with all the great curricular initiatives that we have going on here, that collaboration time for teachers is crucial. So the proposed schedule next year puts all of the sixth grade core teachers, so core, think of math, ELA, science, and social studies. Those teachers have the opportunity to meet together on a daily basis. So sometimes that meeting might be curricular-based where they're talking in their individual content areas. Sometimes it might be one day a week focusing on students. So discussing different students that they all have in common and recognizing what they can do to make sure that each student is successful. That teaming time right now doesn't exist completely. And that's one of the things, looking at the schedule for next year, one of our goals is to make sure that we can create time where staff are always planning together from a team. So that's one very important part. And so hopefully, moving forward, you know, your kids would come home and after the first week or two of school, they're not 6A or 6B, they are the, whatever their team name is. And they begin to identify, we have spirit days. They might come up with team T-shirts that they designed maybe in our STEAM class. You know, there's lots to that teaming. The advisory class is the second component that is truly what helps out middle school. But as Griff said, there's, there's a good way to do it and there's a, just an okay way to do it. And advisory class takes on a lot of different things. For one, it's an adult that you can connect with. So it's somebody that you're meeting with every day and not having the pressure always of talking about math or ELA or science or social studies, but it's someone that you're connecting with. That advisory class kind of, if you think of homeroom, it gives you that, that base, that home base where you feel comfortable. This year, we have been delivering our SEL standards in an extended advisory class on Fridays. So those are those social emotional learning standards that needs to get to all students. And we found that that was a good opportunity to do it. So that SEL time is actually instructional time that we built into the year. Already this year, we hope to continue. Team building happens in advisory class. You know, some days are truly made just to do team building where the kids who may not know one another, especially in sixth grade, coming from all different schools, coming together. And that's their first kind of safe place. They're going to get to know their advisory class and their advisory teachers. And then the advisory is also used curricularly to make sure that you're connecting with kids who maybe for an absence missed curriculum. So it's a time for them to get caught up. Someone who didn't quite get it the first time, there's re-teaching opportunities. Students who are absent for an assessment need time to do that makeup test without missing out on that class as it's moving forward. So advisory time has been used that way. We've tried to use that this year with advisory being very short, 16 minutes. It's very hard. I know some teachers have shared with me that kids trying to take a test have had to come four or five days in a row, which we know are not an optimal way to take an assessment. So those are the two key, really what makes a middle school, a middle school. Just some recent changes that have occurred here. The team emphasis, so looking at that team, trying to get the kids into the teams. The collaboration time for the staff, as I mentioned, and getting that daily advisory. Prior to this school year, they had a 25-minute advisory in the day. But with things like our math block and expanding our math, of course, you can't, if you're going to add time from somewhere, you have to take it away from somewhere else. And so I think that's, that's how scheduling ended up, where we ended up with the schedule that we have this year. In January, the double block of math was approved a year ago. And so of course, that ate up 40 minutes. And then through the negotiations, in the summertime of this past summer, the day was extended. We included, we now have three-minute passing periods, which I know was a big deal to many students and parents and alleviated a lot of stress for a middle schooler's mind. It lengthened the day to incorporate all of those things. But unfortunately, what got cut was the advisory minutes. So we ended up with a 16-minute advisory this year. We had to be creative to get our SEL instruction in. So on Fridays for this year, we've been operating on a shortened schedule. So core classes have been shortened by two minutes to give us a 30-minute SEL instructional time on Fridays. And that's been working very well so far. We started doing some brainstorming of scheduling in January. So we did four different after-school opportunities for any staff to come. And we just kind of started out with, I gave them one basic schedule and it was a free brainstorming. And from that, we came up with what staff wanted, what they didn't want, very supportive. They really believe in the teaming aspect for students and for teachers. They really wanted to try to get that back into the schedule. They really, they really value advisory, but they recognize that 15 or 16 minutes sometimes doesn't get done the right way. We have some classrooms right now, 16 minutes are just golden. And others, it probably isn't being done because it's, it's hard to do anything in that amount of time. So those were kind of the parameters that we were working with and the feedback that we got from the staff. We came up with three different types of schedules, all basically giving core time blocked together. And the other neat thing about middle schools' scheduling is that it allows flex time. So when you have a core block of time, those teachers on the team can work collaboratively to do flexible scheduling. So if I'm doing a science experiment and I know that it's going to take me more than 40 minutes if I really want to do it the right way and in a long period of time, I can work with my team and I can do a double block of science on Monday and know that my social studies teachers are going to do a double block on Monday. And then we're going to flip that on Tuesday. It's not increasing time, but it's increasing the amount of time put together so that I can actually do a meaningful experiment and get all the way through it rather than packing it up at the end of the day and having to get through it again the next day. So that was some of the feedback that we gathered from staff. Some of the implications, looking at the new schedule, the teaming aspect, we're able to do really without any type of altering at all. It's just a reconfiguring of when those classes are occurring. One example, the PE classes for this year are throughout the day, all day long, with really no rhyme or reason to who is in PE. PE is very excited to be able to put all of their classes together next year so that sixth graders will all have PE at the same time, which means then they can do some different groupings in PE. They can have one teacher taking a flex group of kids and doing a competitive end. There can be another group that's doing more of a skill base. You know, I'm kind of okay with this soccer, but I'm not ready to go to the competitive edge. And they can also do then, kids who really don't know how to play at all. And it gives them that freedom to be able to excel at their level and not feel intimidated by maybe someone who's much better at it. So I know, you know, that's just one example of teachers, how they're excited to put that together.
April, one thing too is, this is minor, but like now we're going to have just sixth graders in that locker room. And that might not seem like a big deal, but right now we have sixth and eighth grade boys in a locker room.
That is a big deal.
And coming into middle school as sixth graders, that's a big deal. That's a big deal that we have boys.
We like you have nice kids.
Changing into uniforms as a little sixth grader with some eighth graders around. I think that's a big deal too, where we're now giving them a spot where they're comfortable, where they're with their grade level. You know, those are just some minor things as well that changing that schedule up, I think, is beneficial for the students here too.
And so then the current schedule model, which, did you pass that?
Yes.
So we've, it has morphed through, I can't tell you how many drafts. And everybody's anxious to know, can we just, you know, get something? But I really feel like all of the drafts were important because it led us along a path to, I think, to something that is a very minor change, actually, it's no change, it's good changes from this current year and then giving us a next year to kind of study. Basically, we're expanding the encore offerings as we talked about, I believe it was in April at this meeting, for the sixth graders. So that music class, instead of being an entire year-long, making that a trimester. And that's opening up areas for drama and the STEAM and STEM class. For the advisory periods, we're looking, this was a great brainstorm by a staff member, putting the advisory period, rather than at the end of the day, putting each one at the end of the lunch period. So one of the benefits of that is teachers often will look, work with students during their lunch period. So it's a working lunch, kids are eating, but they're getting extra support. If we get that into a 40-minute, basically it becomes a 40-minute. So you have your 25-minute student lunch, your 15-minute advisory. But when it's all together, it's a 40-minute period, which is great for scheduling and that sort of thing. It allows a child to retake a test in that time. It allows for that advisory, that social emotional type thing where an advisory teacher can say, okay, once a month, we're going to have advisory lunch. So you guys aren't going to the cafeteria, we're having lunch in the advisory room. What do we want to make it? You know, it's Tuesday today, we're going to have Taco Tuesday. Everybody, you know, so it's, it's that connectedness and kind of building a team. So you kind of think of it a little family within a big school. Hoping that if we can do that type of thing, Monday through Thursdays, kind of like what we're doing now, for 16-minute advisories at the end of the day, we're just shifting where it occurs. We actually took one minute off of that and added the one minute to the first hour period because we also recognized in talking that in the beginning of the day, we do the pledge and the announcements. So about a minute of the time, that instructional time is lost. So we put that minute there so that that first hour class is not getting shortened by a minute really. And then still looking at doing that extended Friday advisory so that we can do our SEL instruction during that time. But still connecting it to that lunch period, I think is going to have a lot of positive benefits. The other thing with having advisories at grade levels different times also allows our interventionist, if they need to connect with students in RTI or just struggling students, they're able to get to each grade level. Whereas when advisory is all at the same time, everyone's spread a lot thinner. And then also, as Meryl mentioned, next year, getting together a group of people, parents, anyone here that's welcome and interested in researching that, staff, even some student input into looking at what a quality advisory program is and isn't and making sure that we can come up with a model that would work for Hauser. And then also looking at that, you know, how it affects the schedule, you know? We may find, I'm really optimistic with this advisory with the lunch. I'm very optimistic that we might be able to have a very quality advisory program in that short amount of time because of how it connects to the lunch period. And not have to, because, not have to try to find time in the rest of the day. But that's something that we would like to look at and come back and share with you hopefully later in the fall. And then probably January-ish, I'm guessing, hopefully be able to come up with, you know, a solid schedule moving forward for the following year. And I think that is the presentation. Questions or even like looking at this very drastic schedule?
So I'm assuming everybody notices the biggest difference is with when the lunch hours are on here. Are not drastically different than this year?
The only one changed is the eighth grade. Seventh grade, I'm sorry.
Right, right, right. So we have one, yeah, no, not, obviously, we've always had that early lunch. So we have one grade who's eating lunch incredibly early and then one grade who's eating lunch incredibly late. I'm just making sure, like, we think that's?
That's true now because Central's lunch is in the middle. Yeah, Central's 12 to 1.
They're 12 to 1 right now.
So they'll be, they'll be 11:55 or whatever, 11:57 to 12.
So currently, there's lunch, a Hauser lunch and a Central's lunch now?
No.
No, it's all?
Right now, we have all three.
Yeah, so that's, okay. So that's the difference because now we eat all, at Hauser, they all eat and then Central eats, right? And then the cafeteria is closed.
Right, this is a 1 o'clock.
So, so, so people historically have always complained about the early lunch. Now we're going to have early lunch complaints and super late lunch complaints. So just making sure we, you know, think that through. I mean, for a seventh grader to get to school at 8 o'clock, most of them barely eat anything before they get here. To wait till 1 o'clock to eat lunches.
Our teachers this year for the 10 o'clock eaters, they've incorporated that anyone that wants to bring a snack, they have a snack later in the day, just like elementary kids do.
That's great. I just, I'm just anticipating that coming out. And I know it's a unique situation because you have to accommodate K through 5, you know, 400 K through 5.
I would love to not have a 10 o'clock or a 1 o'clock.
Right, exactly. Nobody, that's not ideal, but.
I will tell you that eighth graders this year have adapted extremely well. I know the first probably couple of weeks of 10 o'clock eating was very odd. But now if you go into the lunchroom, they're all eating and they've adapted.
I would almost think, just from my own experience, that a 10 o'clock lunch is an easier sell because my kid barely eats in the morning. At 10, he's probably starving and he'll eat, he eats a large lunch. He eats a lot. I can only, I can't imagine this, him getting to 1 o'clock without eating and not being a little bit edgy? Or so I just feel like there would be, have to be something.
No, I'd want to make sure that stuff.
I'm only speaking for my child who eats a lot.
But that there is an allowance for that, that they're not prevented from eating something so they don't pass out. No, and they aren't, no, if they're starving.
So as long as that is built in and everybody realizes that is a big change.
I mean, we've pulled this together just this week so we can look one more time and just make sure that we can't shift Central a little bit or?
So, so, you've been?
It wasn't clear, but is this a change or not a change? I thought it was a?
The lunch period moved, the lunch period moved to after Central instead of before.
Currently, there's no lunch after noon at Hauser.
So it starts at 10 a.m. and it goes 10.
10 to 12 is ours.
And then Central goes 12 to 1 and then the cafeteria is closed.
So we moved it down a little bit and then on the other side. Because when you back up the 40 minutes, you make it a 40-minute block. Right now? Right now, it's, lunch is a twenty-five minute block. So when you make it a forty minute block and you want to be around Central's schedule, it gets impacted that way.
That is the implication.
That fifth period, you can't do lunch there.
Well, I actually played around with that last minute, this afternoon, I was looking, I'm like, I think, without going through all the calculations, but there may be a possibility. The only thing that that does is it chops up the core time.
Okay.
Which is nice to have, it's nice to have your core time altogether because of the flexibility. If I shift that, which might be a possibility, what that does is, the sixth graders would go to Encore, they'd have one period of core. Go to their advisory and lunch, and then have their second set.
So it eliminates the ability, as you were saying, like the science teacher to say.
Well, they could go back to the same class.
They'd have to go back to the same class, and it would mean that an ELA block or a math block will be split.
Split up, yeah.
But that's happened, and it worked.
Just, just something to think about, because I already, I just think, I think there's going to be some pushback at a one o'clock lunch. I just want to mention it.
Yeah, and this was our first stab at putting the lunch and advisory together, which literally happened.
Yeah, no, and I think that, I think that's a really great idea.
You said it was a staff manager's member's suggestion, how, have you asked the rest of the staff how they feel about the advisory attached to lunch?
No, because I didn't want to go to them and gee.
Well, but you had the four meetings before, so I was just curious, would it be a big deal to find that out?
I think we have to play around with the lunch a bit more still, because we still have to go back and meet with, like David just said, Judy.
I checked with her, and she, she said these will work, I talked with Pete Gads, these times would work. I think it's just, you know, it's kind of that getting over twelve fifty-nine is late, what are we going to do to accommodate that?
A decision of, if, if that one o'clock lunch creates a better schedule all around, then we deal with it, and if it, you know, if.
I think we should do the two versions.
You will get some pushback, but.
But I'm just, I'm just mentioning it, because I, it's quite an extreme, where some kids are eating at ten and some kids are eating at.
And her leadership team had some input on sort of going this direction. So I think if you want to look at breaking up the core and then just putting those two back in front of them and.
I don't, yeah, we don't know.
Again, I am not an advocate, I'm not giving any.
Well, and the staff, like their initial feedback and input that I've got from them, eighty-five percent of the staff really wanted to move to a thirty minute advisory every day. So they're really looking for a way to make advisory quality.
But that would be cutting two minutes off the schedule.
Right, which is why we're not.
I can't imagine as a science teacher teaching in thirty, however, minutes, that's just not going to happen. It's not going to happen in thirty-eight minutes.
Well, and, and those are all things that are going to be explored next year, so there's no reason to debate that.
No, but that's what they were considering.
So there's been discussion about pushback by parents. And could you share some of your experiences with that? I mean, I mean, pushback in lunch period, early, late?
I've just, I've heard at PTA meetings that I've gone, or PTO meetings at Hauser that I've gone to, that it isn't, I think it's the eighth graders who eat very early right now. And there was just a concern, I mean, they eat at ten oh something, ten thirteen, something like that. And people were concerned, but actually, after that first meeting, I've never heard anything after that, because they do allow it.
And getting used to it and realizing that kids have the opportunity for a snack.
Right.
I don't even know that they, I think in the beginning, the kids really took advantage of, I'm starving, I eat at ten o'clock, I need to have a snack. At this point, it would be interesting, I'm not really sure how many are really still taking advantage of that, it's just that you get, your body gets used to it.
I also hear some kids, they, they tell me, like, because I carpool people, and they just say they eat in the hallway, grab something in their locker, so.
It's true, they grab it and they're like.
Don't name names.
No, they, they, they.
Do what you got to do.
I do what I have to do.
I think a part of it is communication too, once we do get a final draft out, getting it out early, getting it out.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
In advance, with, like, snacks will be allowed, you know.
Very important.
I completely agree with that.
Lunchtime aside, would I take your point, though, it's kind of late? But I think the idea you have of combining lunch with advisory makes a lot of sense, because then you get a longer block of time.
Right, completely agree.
And we don't have to sacrifice the instructional minutes, which was a huge concern.
What happened, I mean, so the lunch obviously is in the cafeteria, and then the advisory, do they go to another classroom?
They would go to the classroom, the teacher's classroom.
Teacher's classroom, okay.
So if they decided to do, like, a fun advisory lunch, those kids wouldn't, they'd go to the cafeteria to get their food if they're purchasing. Otherwise, they'd all go right to that classroom to do, like a team building lunch.
In that fourth period, would it be possible to do advisory then lunch, or is it?
We talked about that, and we think we'll get the more bang for our buck. This way, because they actually, even though the lunch period says till three thirty-two, or, like, the first one is ten thirty-two. We start dismissing kids a minute or two early, because you've got to get a hundred plus kids, two hundred plus kids out of there. So we really think we'll get more, we talked about that, especially at the ten o'clock one.
That makes, that makes.
We thought it would, we'd get more out of our advisory by doing it this way.
Two other questions I had, is that, I asked Ms. Rondo about this, is that, in the fifth period, it seems like the schedules for eighth and seventh, kind of gets a little bit out of whack with sixth, in terms of the start time of the.
The period.
Class, period starts at ten fifty for one, and then ten fifty-three, is that, is that a problem?
We're operating under that now.
Oh, you are?
When you have a twenty-five minute lunch, so your forty minutes are off.
We can't run a bell.
We don't have bells that ring, at least under our current software system. From ten to twelve, after it rings at ten, the bells don't ring again until twelve. Teachers keep track of time and things seem to flow.
I get the emails when they let kids out late, it doesn't happen that often.
Yes, I was going to say, there's something to be, I was like, sorry, forgot.
So I've been sort of tracking that, it hasn't been bad.
Other questions?
David, we're going to look for a bell system, though, that we can program, right, a little bit better, right?
I couldn't hear what.
We'll fix the one we've got.
A bell program that we can actually, like, customize a little bit more.
I, I would, I would like to hear the side conversations, because I.
Oh, I meant to say it louder, I was saying, like, I asked David the other day about a bell system that we could customize a bit more. Because we don't have flexibility in our bell system right now. Or at least we don't, we're not sure that we do.
I run the bells now, so it's almost as if the bell schedule that you set is the bell schedule for everyone. So that's why the bells are off from ten to noon, because it's, there are some schools where you can designate zones, right? So first floor, second floor, third floor, but now, or even rooms. But now, the system that we have doesn't allow us to say, I only want this bell to ring in this room, this room, this room.
Get different chimes, like your phone, right?
Yeah, we looked at it.
It doesn't have the capability, the upgrade does.
Yeah, so that's why the bells are a little different.
So, we're exploring that.
Well, that certainly gives us a lesson to think about, I don't envy you guys to figure that out.
And just to make sure I'm, because I'm new into the Hauser world, they, we used to do teams.
Yes.
Until this year.
Last year, this school year is the first year that it went truly to, as Grif started out with, like, a mini high school, departmentalized.
Because I know, I did hear a lot of feedback from people that they, they liked the, you know, liked the team, so we are getting back more to that.
We're getting back to that, we heard that when we first got here, pretty loud and clear from people.
Which is moving back to the middle school, which is should be.
I just want to make sure, yeah.
Which is, I think, is what the best work is.
Yeah, I think, I agree, yeah.
Well, thank you.
We're two minutes early, according to our schedule, just one thing, do we have any new tour graduates here? They have an advisory program, it's, to me, the best I've ever seen. They have a teacher assigned, when children come, or the high school kids come in ninth grade, for four years to their advisory. And part of the requirement is they go every year and have dinner at the homes of their, of each one of the students. That's a requirement of each teacher. And they get personally involved, it's that person outside the guidance counselor, the social workers, they have all those support groups. But that is a personal involvement.
That's quite a staffing thing.
I haven't seen it anywhere else. And that's why it is a premier school, in a lighthouse.
And it's a big school, right? It's a big school, right?
It's a big school, but that makes it a lot smaller, when you have like that. So can you imagine if a child came in in sixth grade, and we assign one adult, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade would be that advisory. On top of, you know, all the other support groups. What a wonderful support.
I think it's great to have the core teachers all know, you know, so if my, if your student is having an issue, and maybe it's not really obvious to the ELA teacher, but a science teacher really, but they don't talk, so I think that's a great.
The teachers were really missing that.
Yeah, I think that's a great addition, just for success for the students.
Because already, like, my fifth grader has a different teacher for social studies and for English and math, and it's nice that they can talk together. And I think they kind of have a little peek at that, getting to visit different teachers, but they still, I think she likes the connection to. I think it's so good, so, yeah, I think that'd be good for us. All right, I'm going to pass it to Linda for policies.
There's only one thing on my agenda, I only get ten minutes, and I don't even think we'll take that. So I'm going to, at the last meeting, it was an IASB update, policy seven one nine zero, student behavior. And we said we were going to pass it to our board attorney for review. We did that, and we got the feedback, which is in your board book, and I'll pass it to Grif too.
Yeah, if, the actual, the School Board Association actually asked us to consult our legal counsel, because there are some questionable issues here. One interesting issue, since marijuana is legal now in the state, in that law, it says that you could not possess marijuana in a school. So according to our state law, even though a doctor prescribes it, and doctors prescribe a multitude of drugs that come into our schools, marijuana is the one drug that they cannot have on school property in the state of Illinois. I thought it was interesting, and she points out that there's probably going to be some legal challenges. If a child has seizures, and a doctor sees fit to prescribe marijuana for seizures. And, and we're saying, no, you can't have that, you can't possess or be under the influence of marijuana while you're in school. Well, that's clearly going to be attested. So what our legal counsel suggests, you've put the word under state law, is prohibited under state law. Which clarifies, at least from our position, we're following state law. And at some point, you know, they're not going to challenge this, but they're going to challenge, I guess, the whole issue at a higher level. So that, I thought that was one interesting part of the, of the policy change that she's recommending. And then she's very clearly saying that we should have Shelby, in terms of suspension, not, may also, you know, she's, she's being very specific about the suspension and expulsion rules, using the word Shelby rather than may also be, which is significantly different in terms of interpretation. And this is actually an interpretation of a new, new state law that deals with student behavior. And it will be in effect in the, it has to be in effect in the sixteen, seventeen school year. So you're looking at now, our legal, the legal opinion that we receive based on the School Board Association recommended policy. So now you have actually comments about her, the woman's comments regarding, you know, the School Board Association's issues. So you have it all down. And, and we'll bring you back a clean copy at our May seventeenth meeting for a first, first reading of the new policy. And then we'll go from there.
Any questions or concerns?
And, and we went with Terry Engler as the lawyer, and cost us less money, which I always love to tell you. I know you love to hear.
I am eight minutes ahead on mine, so. So Rich, I'll pass it to you.
Yes, I'll pass it to you.
Rich has the biggest agenda.
Right, so.
True, well, I'll give you my eight minutes, you got it.
I may need it, but I appreciate the efficiency of my predecessors here, and I'll be doing the same.
You have to, though, yeah, that's a high standard.
That's right.
That's right, so before we jump into this, we've got a bunch of topics to cover. So David will, you know, lay out his information for each of the topics. And I'd like if we could just let him lay it all out before we jump in with questions, because it's likely that he may answer those questions in his presentation. And then what we can do is just rotate the first question around when he's done, so.
Go ahead, David.
Well, I'm, let's see. Richard Boris is the owner and principal of Cigna Systems, and he is supposed to be here. I just asked Paul Pacetti if he could see if Richard is, is having a hard time finding this room. So if it's, if it's all right with you, I would like to start with letter B while we wait for Richard to, to arrive. Okay, so, letter B is M&amp;J paving, and I'll just, for your convenience, I'll pass this out. We've talked about bicycle parking capacity, and in addition to the capacity, the quality of the bike racks, and our paving bid awarded to M&amp;J was absent any improvements to, to Central. So to, it's desirable, and if you go look at the Central bike racks, they've certainly seen their, their useful life. So I think I mentioned to you that our exposure on this was about twenty-seven thousand. Right now, that's, that's basically what we're looking at. The, on the top page, the credit for what is in the contract, the nine thousand nine ten for Hauser and the twenty-six, twenty-nine for Hollywood, those are shown as credits. And then the additions would be to, instead of buying the hoop-shaped racks, the wellness committee did research, and they recommend that we go with a, with an inverted U. So this is the capacity that we've come up with, and if you go two pages in, I know this is not as clear as it might be, but there are twelve locations, and each location is numbered. And, and this kind of gives you a good, clear picture of where all the racks would go. And five of the racks would be movable, giving the principal, principals some flexibility as to where the racks are located. Also, we, you know, we might decide to change the configuration, so we figured that there's a, there's a desirability to have movable racks. So this would take us from a current capacity of a hundred and sixty-eight slots for bicycles to a capacity of two sixteen. And, and that's the change order as it stands. I'm, I'm having a little hesitancy to present this change order at, at the May meeting in its current form. I've asked, and the reason is, we're keeping a log of actual bicycle parking. And we have yet to see, I think the maximum I have is like seventy-one bicycles. So I'm kind of looking for that, that strong, you know, demonstration by our students.
A peak day.
Yeah, that we're, that we're, that we're out of capacity. If, if the most that we come up with is, you know, a hundred and forty, even on the best day, and our capacity that we were already, that we've already built into the plan is for a hundred and sixty-eight, then just replacing our current capacity should be sufficient. So I, Paul Pacetti is going to, we, we looked at the unit prices, and, and I think the, the price is going to drop from twenty-seven thousand down to about twenty thousand if we don't order any movable racks. So I think what, unless something, you know, some, some real demonstration of that, that need for additional capacity occurs, I present a change order in the June, at the June meeting, and that change order would say, well, let's see, I know I can't do it at the June meeting, I'm sorry, it has to be at the May meeting. All right, I have to do it at the May meeting in order for us to deal with lead time, because we all want this done with the paving project. So, sorry, scratch and reverse that. And I, my inclination is to present for a hundred and sixty-six bicycle parking spaces. And just, everyone understand that if we need more movable racks, we can buy them, they're movable, they arrive, we can place them where, where we want them to be. So the change order that I'm anticipating presenting to the board for approval at the May meeting would be for about twenty thousand dollars. Because you drop from twenty-six, nine forty, down to about twenty thousand dollars. And, and we achieved the quality improvement that is recognized as a need. Going to the additional capacity at, or replacement of all of the bike racks at Central, as well as at, at Hauser. So I don't know the board's comfort level with this, we hadn't talked about it a whole lot, but I certainly would like to recommend approximately a twenty thousand dollar change order at the May meeting. a $20,000 change order at the May meeting.
It does make sense that our bike rack installation really meet demand, and not, you know, absorbently exceed demand. But do we have any other board comments?
Especially since, as you say, if they're movable, we can order them anytime. Which is right.
Yeah, if we can order those, I think we'll. So going from the 216 to 166, you have the ideas of which ones you're taking out?
Yeah, it's everything that's marked here on the map that says movable.
All the movable ones.
Yeah, everything that's, it's the green lines.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Where it's green, those would be, they would have concrete footings.
Yeah.
Kids could climb on them, jump on them, try and knock them over. They would not succeed in knocking them over. They would be secure.
Are these the very same bike racks that are movable?
Yes. I mean, the movable and the fixed are the same bike rack. They're all, they're, they come on like a sled, and that's, you know, very heavy gauge steel, and the, they're the inverted U style.
I just, I just, what's the rationale for making them immobile using the footings?
So that the kids can't move them around, and if they, if they're, you know, I watch kids, they play on things. They use their bodies, and we really don't want to have a daily challenge of repositioning the bike racks.
Although we were talking about having quite a few movable bike racks.
Five units.
Five units.
Well, in the, see the map?
Yes.
There's, the ones that are marked in yellow, those would be future movable if the capacity turns out to be needed.
Sure.
Right, we don't really know if the peak capacity is fall or September. So we don't really figure that out. Is that what you're saying? We don't know?
Right. And I think we would, there's time until final budget adoption. We would be incorporating this into materials forwarded to the board for your approval. And, you know, taking it step by step, the next step at this time would be to present the change order for approximately $20,000 to go to the U-shaped and add Central replacements.
So I'm going to ask a question, and I'm saying right now that I might be wrong, so please bear with me. Does the math add up? So right now, it was, on this map, there's 216, and you're saying we're going to go to about, to 166. Right, there's 70 movable ones. Is, am I doing the math wrong? And I'm going to be really embarrassed if I am. Do you know what I mean? So I'm curious, which of those movable ones, are there any that are staying? Because, Jeff, do you want to do the math for me?
No, you can do the math.
Oh, you're right.
Okay, so 216 minus 70 movable isn't 166. So I'm just curious which ones.
Yeah, we're actually, we're subtracting.
I literally did that twice on my paper. I was like.
You're right, that is a math error on this. We're subtracting five movable.
Right.
Right.
And there's a discrepancy of 20.
In your picture.
Okay. So, and you'll clarify that, I'm assuming.
Right.
I just wanted to make sure that by doing this, we weren't like then moving to one, like even less?
Right, right.
No, we have a current capacity of 168.
Okay.
It worked out to be 166, and those would be all fixed. For the last draft that I got thrown.
Okay, okay.
I'm looking at Paul behind.
You were asking earlier about the peak time, if I can speak, turn it around. This fall, what I noticed, because when we were outside in the morning and after school, is that we were running out of space. There was kids like locking up to another bike.
Yeah.
So they would come to the office, be like, can I, my bike is fixed to another bike by the kitchen, they were locking up there. So I think bike riding here is a wonderful, it's one of the things I love about this school, is just seeing the students show up on their bikes. So I think it's great that we're providing an opportunity for them to be able to lock it up. And then also that we don't have to try to find the person who they locked up to, and then, you know, all that.
We were talking about how the weather hasn't broken yet, and so we've been tracking it, so we asked David to track it for a couple more weeks when the weather breaks.
I think the Wellness Committee, Mrs. Miller came to talk. I thought she said the reason they may not be fully utilized is because of the current shape that they are now, that they are actually being used sideways, and that they're not even able to.
So maybe one bike is taking several spaces.
One person might take three, four spaces.
That's correct.
So from what I remember, that could be another reason why we're not at capacity, is because there is no room to put.
Right.
I have no idea, but I just remember her saying.
It is a problem. You're right.
Would we rectify that with the?
With the inverted U.
The shape, right.
Yeah.
Hopefully.
And if we don't, we could always order movables at a later date.
Right. The goal of the Wellness Committee is to get more kids to ride their bikes.
To bike.
That's the goal, is to get 200 plus.
Right, and if we had some options, they might.
But if you could add later, then you can resolve.
Yeah, if you can add the movable, right, and if they don't have to fight to connect to somebody else, they might want to do.
So I'm sorry.
The footings on the change order, you have 36 footings divided, there's four footings per sled. That's how we came up with the 11 is nine fixed and two removable, or movable. And the 32 footings is eight fixed and three that are movable. That's how I came up with the five.
And people who know me know Mathis is not my strong. So I was like very reluctant to talk about it.
That's why we have these committee meetings, so we can have conversation. The formal request for board approval is not being presented tonight.
Exactly.
But it will, will be presented at the May meeting.
May 17.
May 17.
Any other bike rack questions for David?
No, thank you.
So, do you want to move on to?
One more.
I'm sorry, go ahead. What was the Wellness Committee's recommendation to the number?
To encourage more use of bicycles to come to school.
Did they come up with a recommended number?
No.
No, they didn't.
Yes, they did. They asked for a 25% increase.
Oh, okay.
That's true. And they like the inverted U shape better.
We currently have 168. 168 times 1.25 is 210. The 216 is a few slots greater than a 25% increase.
So they're asking for 25%. And Jason, you were saying that in the fall, we were at capacity?
Yes, because I think what Ms. Claver said was that the bike racks right now aren't fitting the bikes as much as they were supposed to be.
Right.
And also the location of the bike rack, it's only one side of the bike rack where traditional bike racks, you get both sides. So with the, next to the building, you're only getting the one side. And I kind of joked with April, saying it's like a mini Amsterdam problem in the bike sense, Amsterdam.
Oh, my goodness. We have a new house.
There's a lot of bikes. We have a lot. There's tandems here, there's.
Yeah.
It's such a great thing, but next to the kitchen, they're locking up, they're locking up the other bikes, they're, they're leaving them unlocked, which makes me worried. So yes, some of the bikes aren't where they have like the vertical slopes they're supposed to put their tire through. They're bent, they're ripped off, so it's.
So it's a theoretical possibility of how many they can accommodate, but that's not the reality of what.
Right, they're just putting it in kind of wherever they can squeeze one in right now.
That's right, right. That's not their functional use.
There's eight per section, and I think it is realistic that eight bikes could fit.
But I don't think that's what's happening.
Can you do it systematically?
Kids, kids just, maybe they needed some training. But instead of giving them training, we'll get better racks.
Perfect, perfect.
All right.
Okay?
All right.
Back to the.
Signal windows.
Okay, so we do have, hold on a second, let me give you an introduction. Richard Boris is here from Cigna Systems. In this memorandum that was distributed in your board materials, I just want to take a moment to set a backdrop to our discussion. Three umbrella options were discussed with regard to the bike park. We talked about asbestos abatement and being a component, and the Hope Steel Windows being, Hope's being the manufacturer that is original to the building, St. Cloud being a very good historical replication alternative. And then, as a result of conversations with Mr. Charles Piple, with the Riverside Historical Commission, we were given some guidance as to, you know, exploring some other options that resulted in a contact with the chief architect for the Illinois Historical Preservation Agency, who advised that we could consider the Cigna Systems retrofit, which leaves the current historical material intact. And historical reservation, kind of sometimes focuses on keeping what is historical and the original material. So we had a meeting after, we apprised the board of the fact that there would be a sample installation, had a meeting after the sample installation was completed. Dr. Miller was present at that meeting, and Mr. Piple was there. We were able to look at the windows, board members were invited to look at the windows, the members of the Riverside Historical Commission looked at the windows, and I just have, you know, seven points here, I won't read them to you, but that, you know, kind of summarized the discussion. And I don't think I really need to get into these seven points, because I know that a lot of it is going to be covered by Mr. Boris giving us an overview, and then questions and answers with board members. So without further ado, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Boris, and I've asked him to kind of give us, you know, some historical information, some little bit of information about how his windows retrofit system, why it's so effective, and kind of tell us what it would mean to have his system be used instead of tearing out the windows and replacing them. So without further ado, Mr. Boris, if you could give us a short presentation of the Cigna Systems, what it can do for us.
Okay, well.
Mr. Boris, could you step to the microphone?
Yes, sure.
Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. My name is Richard Boris, I'm the president of Cigna System and also inventor of the system. Being a poor starving student in Denmark in the early 70s, I needed to make some money and get the idea that the simplest way to improve existing windows to their thermal performance was just to add second layer of glass to the existing glass in the windows and seal it hermetically. It sounds easy, but it wasn't so easy, and after two years, I was a trial and experiments. And at that time, I was studying architecture, so I had access to the Danish Technological Institute as well as the Norwegian Technological Institute, which at this, at that time was the authority in the area of accelerated testing of insulated glass units. At the time, they were doing all the testing as a independent laboratory for British Pinklington, the inventor of the flowed glass process. So under their advice and guidance and with their help, we developed a final solution. The system was tested for accelerated aging and proved to be very, you know, the solution we developed was very effective, and we get the backing of the Danish Glazier Association. And in 1976, 40 years ago, we started marketing first in Denmark and Sweden, Norway, and then we, within the next two years, we had a network of distributors all over the Western Europe. At that time, Europe was not united, so we had to do the testing for each government in each individual country. So the system was tested like 15 different countries by the government laboratories, proved to be very, very effective, very durable. And in 1978, I come over to United States to investigate the possibility of marketing here, here in the United States, and I decided to stay here. And in 1980, I started Cigna System here in Chicago. Since then, we were doing the installation with some, making, Chicago being the most difficult climate for this type of unit, because the summer is comparable to tropical climate, it's very hot and humid, you've got a lot of wind pressures coming from the lake, and the winters are very, very severe. And so with some improvement and some modification, we developed a metal, we become very effective, very durable. At the first years, when we introduced the system to architects and to the state of Illinois, the state of Illinois, especially the historical people, were very enthusiastic, because it allowed to, the objective of historic preservation is to keep as much of the original elements of the building as possible, especially woodwork. So when we keep the original window frame sashes and especially the original old glass, it's just by converting the existing glass to isolate, hermetically sealed insulated glass, we stop the condensation, we stop the ice buildup, which stops the deterioration of the woodwork as well. So right away, the Historic Preservation Committee was very, very enthusiastic. We went, get awarded a window work for the first historic restoration project in the city of Chicago. It was that our building, right on the corner of downtown Chicago, it's a daily glazier corner of Randolph and Dearborn. We had, that, it was 1981, we retrofitted seven floors of wood frame windows. As of last year, we checked the installation, everything is perfect, no signs of deterioration, no signs of moisture condensation, and it followed. Especially during the early 80s and early 90s, when there was a lot of enthusiasm for historic preservation, we did all the window work for, during the restoration of Chicago Theater and Page Brother Building. The general contractor was W.E. O'Neill, then we did Lake Shore Press Building, the old building of the printers of old Sears catalog. Then we did Underplandetary, we did some work for the Museum of Science Industry. In 1991, we get awarded the contract to retrofit all the windows in the, for the Navy, the Great Lakes Naval Training Center in North Chicago, the Commander Building. One of the advantages of the system is that you basically, we don't open up the buildings to the elements, we, it's very clear, very quiet process, and we could work around people working in the rooms. So like we worked in 1991, when the Navy was conducting the war in the first Iraqi war, at the same, when they were conducting, the Navy was conducting the war, and we were at the same time, you know, working in their offices and retrofitting their windows. And so, we, and you know, basically, we've been accepted, the system was completely accepted by General Services Administration. We did some work for headquarters of the Homeland Security, we did some work for the IRS. Their problem was the noise, the, their offices were located on second floor, down, very downtown facing the elevated train, and even though the building was a new building with double insulated glass, they had a still getting a lot of noise from every passing train. We used the retrofit system to add third layer of glass with laminate, sun-absorbing glass, and after we got done with the installation, you could see the train, you couldn't hear them. And 1984, we approached the condominium association at 900 910 Lake Shore Drive, the building designed by Miss, famous architect, Miss Van der Rohe. At that time, his grandson, Dirk Lohan, was living there, also a very well-known engineer and architect, so the association contracted us to do a sample installation in his condominium in 910 Lake Shore Drive. As soon as we got done, it was late fall, you know, the benefit was so obvious that he right away recommended us to the association, and also to, we've been the only contractor approved to do any window work in all the other buildings designed by Miss Van der Rohe. Recently, last.
Let me interrupt for just a second. Point of trivia, Mr. Charles Piple owns the condominium at 900. Point of trivia, Mr. Charles Pfeiffer owns the condominium at 910 Lake Shore Drive and it has this retrofit in the condominium, so.
In half, he's at half, like he's at half, the condominium has a half dozen and he notices a distinct difference in terms of the sound and the insulation quality.
His apartment, I checked his, our records, his apartment was done for previous owners in 1986.
Wow.
And it was done, the owner just ordered to do the windows in bedrooms and leave the windows in the living room single glass.
Another point that I'd like to raise, but I don't want this to be in the newspaper, is that...
Guarantees, just guarantees.
Three of the commission members could not find the windows that were being, that were altered by the sample installation. In other words, the sample installation was so seamlessly fitting with all of the other windows that even a trained eye, knowing that they were looking for a difference in windows in a relatively small building, could not find where the retrofit had taken place. And I don't want to gloat about that, I don't want to cast aspersions about the three who couldn't find it because, and that's why I don't want it in the newspaper.
Well, you see, that's happened quite often. You see, it happened quite often, but we try to keep it as, change as little as possible. So it happens to us quite often that, you know, we got the contract, we finish the job, I submit the final invoicing and the architect said, "Why are you invoicing us? We didn't even start the installation." I said, "Well, we're finished already," you know, "I have to go with the magnifying glass and look, you know, for the difference." So that's the main, well, there are two main advantages of the system. First of all, it preserves the original elements of the building, doesn't change the look and is relatively inexpensive, very simple, very clean, very quiet and it's time-tested. You know, I don't, now, after forty years, last year I was in Denmark and I visited some of our installation, which we did, the very first installation we done in the eighty-six, eighty-seven. I couldn't, you know, I saw the windows, they're still there and still no visible any signs of aging or any signs of deterioration and the same thing here in United States, in Chicago, where the climate is so much more severe. In 1981, we get the contract with the U.S. Post Office, they had a program of energy conservation for all different locations. One of the location was Berwick Post Office, another one was Riverside North Post Office. And last week I went over there to look up the installation done in 1981 and windows are still there, there's still again, no signs of aging or deterioration. So I believe the expected lifetime of the unit is about fifty to sixty years, but those units could be very easily repaired. So because what do you do, just remove the head-on glass, replace the spacers and put a new one and put a glass again without attaching the original woodwork or original glass. So basically just keep those windows, you know, for hundreds of years from time to time, just renewing the system. And another main advantage outside of durability simply is it's very, very cost-effective. And main benefits right like right now, when people are not concerned about the energy conservation, but everybody are concerned about creature comfort. And by converting a single glazing to double glazing, you reduce heat loss through the glass area over sixty percent and reducing the noise probably about seventy, eighty percent. So that's our old customers for whom we installed the double glazing in the eighties in their condominium, when they sell the old condominium and move to a different one, the first thing they do, they just call on us to do the windows. They cannot imagine, you know, living with a single glazing.
Mr. Boris, we want to thank you very much for coming in. You certainly have an incredible body of work that you described to us here, but before we let you go, do we have any board questions for Mr. Boris?
Another couple of points of information, we contacted our attorney about the, you know, using this type of a system. This is arguably a single source. Mr. Boris does not distribute manuals to other glazing companies to learn how to replicate his, his, his system. There's a certain level of proprietary knowledge that Cigna Systems has. That being the case, I tried to make the argument with our attorney that this was a single-source situation. The attorney is not convinced. Therefore, in order to follow, you know, proper protocol for a public entity as a school district, we need to go out for bid. So I've taken the step, Dr. Miller was apprised this step was taken. Tomorrow morning, there will be a publication in the Suburban Life indicating that a bid will be opened on May 16. We've gone to the trouble of developing bid specifications consistent with Cigna Systems. The title of the bid is retrofit, windows retrofit to double pane project. The stumbling block that other companies that might want to compete will immediately encounter is in the bid specifications, we're requiring a ten-year warranty. Cigna Systems will provide a ten-year warranty. I struggled to imagine another company being able to match that specification. I did, I did, you know, get confirmation from our attorney that we are within our rights as the owners of the property to say that that is a bid specification. So need to lay that out for the board because at this time, we're proposing that this project move forward. And the, there is a significant cost savings that we're anticipating, although we don't know what Mr. Boris's final proposal will be until May 16. On May 16, we will see a proposal and on May 17, which is the date of the board meeting, we will either be presenting further information about what has transpired or we likely will be presenting a recommendation to proceed with the project being completed over the summer of 2016, this coming summer. As the board has been apprised in the past, your bond issue has money set aside in a capital projects fund that was designated for Blythe Park Windows. We would be using a portion of that, that money to fund the project as was originally envisioned when the bonds were issued. So at this point, you know, I just wanted to put that as a further piece of information about how this is moving along.
So the bid will be published, the open, RFP will be published tomorrow with the bid opening on May 16th and I think that is before our next meeting.
That's right, May 17th is our next meeting. So we'll have the bids opening and action by the board on May 17.
Okay. Any board...
Are there any qualified competitors to your system?
Every glazing contractor in Chicago tried to copy our system. And at the end, we ended up repairing their windows because it's, they fog up very first winter. And that's, that's, you see, the process is theoretically is very simple, but you have to follow step-by-step, very precise process of installation. The process have to change with the changing time of the year, temperature and humidity. And you have to give, you know, the training of an installer costs around $60,000, take about two years and it's not only the process of installation, but also we work all the time with occupied offices or apartments with expensive carpeting, furniture and so on. So, you know, every, every glazing contractor tried and the big one, the small one, and all of them ended up just realizing not as, it is not just slapping second layer of glass, some spacer, some caulking around, it's not going to hold. Because you've got a lot of, you know, you have to know the nitty-gritty of the technology of manufacturing insulated glass units. And those units which you've got in the windows are being manufactured inside in control environment. When you do the onsite, what we do is the onsite manufacturing of insulated glass units. Therefore, the elements change and you have to adapt the process of installation to those changes and this is a knowledge, which I tried my first years in the eighties to build a network of distributors, but I realized that people just don't follow the instruction. They get, their units are failing and they come back, they claim the system doesn't work. It didn't work for us. We had distributors in Iowa, we had distributor in Michigan, Indiana, we had distributor in Philadelphia, New Jersey, same story, they simply don't know how to hundred percent follow the procedure. If you don't follow the procedure, the unit will the first year to start fogging up and you have to replace them. But we ended up doing repairs for MTH, North American Glass Industries, there was, used to be Cadillac Glass, they all just gave up. And if they had a project, they just come to us and use us as subcontractors and we did it for them, they just fronted. So that's basically, that's how, after thirty-eight years here in Chicago, we are the sole source, simply because we, we do the work right. So that's how we, you know.
And I was concerned about the possibility that there might be a problem with the company staying in business for the next forty years. And Mr. Boris is indicating that he does have a corporate continuation plan that does include his son. So, you know, the Cigna Systems is not, is not a company that, it's been around for multiple decades. We, I'm crossing my fingers and toes and taking it at face value that this company's going to be around into the future.
Might we get bids against Mr. Boris here by local contractors that could guarantee for ten years and then go out of business after eight years?
We'll find out if we, I mean, that's the reason why public entities are required to go through the bidding process. You don't know what's going to happen in the bidding process. So, so I would ask Mr. Boris to sharpen his pencil, give us the best price that he possibly can, beating out the competition based on price right out of the, right out of the box because the school district has the authority to award a bid to the lowest responsible, responsive bidder. Now, if a contractor submits a bid that doesn't include that ten-year warranty, we also put in a requirement that they have a successful installation of a double pane retrofit in place that is at least fifteen years old, that we could visit and contact the owner. The word responsive is going to be difficult for a competing company because it's going to be hard for a competing company to give us a ten-year warranty and also be able to demonstrate that they have a successful installations. Mr. Boris has, has numerous successful installations, it's just that they've been accomplished via some pretty, let's call it scientifically expert, skilled workers that know how to follow directions that are very precise in order to keep the windows from failing in difficult temperature conditions. But I think the reality is that we have so many different places that we could visit, including one owned by the chairperson of the Riverside Historical Commission, that I'm willing to say to the board, this is a contractor that we can trust, has succeeded with this system.
Any other questions?
Quick question, actually. Is the, are we also intending to paint the window frames? I think we talked about that a little bit. We are intending to do.
Yeah, what, I submitted already a draft of the specification for the whole job specifically describing each window section because you've got a lot of walls facing different direction with different requirement and also emailed this draft to the sellers. And there I included this painting, the caulking of the frames to the brick and also repair all the hardware and installation of weather stripping to ensure there is no air filtration. Our goal is always to bring the old windows to perform like a new replacement window.
And all of this is under the scrutiny of Leggett Architects, Paul Pacetti, and, you know, so the board has the architect of record, your school architect is Leggett Architects and we're making sure that, you know, all the specifications pass muster as normally would be the case with anything that Leggett puts their name to.
Very good.
I just wanted to add, you know, the biggest project we did in Chicago is Street View Center at 233 East Erie. In 1984, 85, we retrofitted twenty floors of residential condominiums. At the same time, we, you know, we repaired some hinges and lags of the operable windows and it was 1984, 85. Last year, we did a survey, the building with the building management and we couldn't find even one window which will fail. And the only work which was required was to replace some of the hinges and some lags because the hardware deteriorates through the year, but the insulated glass unit didn't show any sign of failing and the south side was, on the south side, we applied special solar film to the original glass, which would be encapsulated inside the unit. Also, the film didn't show any sign of either bubbling, fading or any sign of deterioration. So this is, this installation is like thirty-two years old, it's probably about over two thousand glass units. So that's, you know, that's what makes me very, very proud of my own unit.
You're right.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're on to item number C. Is that right, David?
Yes.
Okay. So that's the early childhood education playground. Since the time that we last met, most of you know that Mr. Pat, Jeff and I met with the Hollywood Community Association. I guess I just want to briefly talk about that and then open it up to board discussion. For me, the purpose of the meeting was really to open up a line of communication directly with the board. For me, I also wanted to communicate this board's strategic plan and how the playgrounds fit within that plan and how important the playgrounds are to this board. In hindsight, as we look at all this, how this played out, I think it was perhaps a breakdown in that communication. So that was really our goal in the meeting is to, is to have a face-to-face to express exactly what our intentions were. And I think at this point, it's probably a good time for us to talk about exactly how we got to this point. So the actions that this board took to, to head in that direction, to address the playgrounds, to, excuse me, to form the playground committee. And Jeff has some details from those past meetings in October.
Right, so yeah, I just want to add something to something Rich said, which is, I think we did drop the ball six months ago because unlike the presentation we just heard, when we knew we were going to do the Blythe windows, the very first thing we did is we reached out to the Historical Preservation Committee. Before we did any meetings, discussions, we said, "We want you guys involved, it's important that, you know, you're a part of this." And as a result, we're going to be, it looks like... And as a result, we're going to, it looks like we're going to have a wonderful outcome, basically. And with the HCA, we did not go directly to their board, and in hindsight, we should have done that. But the history, and I, this is stretched out over six months, so I don't, I didn't even remember myself, you know, the sequence until I looked it up today. Our first discussion of the playgrounds was on October 6th, it was a committee of the whole meeting. Mr. Pasetti gave us a presentation of, we saw a number of different pictures of different playgrounds. And at that point, I think Mr. Sellers recommended that to do all of the playgrounds would be a two- or three-year project, and that, however, priority one was doing the ECE playground, because we had nothing for those children. And that was, the other playgrounds were less critical to be done in two sixteen, so that was the initial recommendation, the initial discussion. On October 20th, in our business meeting, Mr. Sellers came back with two options for a, we decided, sorry, we decided in the October 6th meeting, we're going to put together a committee of parents, of staff, of playground experts, come up with some recommendations. On October 20th, Mr. Sellers came back with two different options for a charge to the playground committee. We unanimously agreed on the charge that says, the playground committee is charged with developing a recommendation for playground equipment to be installed at Hollywood schools, specifically for the students in the two-to-five age group. The playground committee is further charged with completing an overview assessment of playground facilities needs at each of the four elementary schools, providing the Board of Education with a list of suggestions for improvement. The committee is to be apprised that prioritizing the future year scheduling of playground improvements for K-5 grade level students has to be determined by the school board based upon the availability of funding. So, that was the charge to the committee, which was basically focused on the two-to-five year at Hollywood. Then on the number four, we had another committee, the whole meeting, and Rich brought up the topic of the budget. What was the budget we wanted to allocate for this playground? And became, we discussed a range. I think Mr. Sellers recommended twenty thousand to thirty thousand dollars was the range that we would spend for this playground equipment. We all agreed to that range. At that meeting, actually Rachel is very pressed the interview, you raised the point, well, this playground will not be on our land, it'll be in the HCA land. Is that an issue? Is that something we should address? At that point, I think we were told that the, quote, the HCA was more than willing to give us all the space we need. So, yeah, I think in our minds, we were thinking, well, this is something everyone wants, we're good. We should have probably in hindsight, said to ourselves, well, let's call them up anyway, talk directly to the board, make sure what we were thinking about this, the two-to-five year old is what they're thinking. But we did not do that. Then the playground committee, they met, I don't know how many times did they meet, three times?
Four, five.
Four or five times. They came back to the board on the February 16th business meeting, and they recommended, their recommendation was to do the ECE, and also for the two-to-two to five, and also to do a five-to-twelve year playground. At the same time, the administration made a formal recommendation that we adopt the recommendation for the early childhood, which would be a cost of approximately thirty-four thousand dollars. We talked about that at length, and we decided to adopt the administration's recommendation. Our reasoning was essentially that we wanted to have a district-wide plan, we want to look at what the needs were at Central and at Ames and Hollywood for the K-35, and then decide, you know, what the budget was going to be, what the timeframe was, and that sort of thing. At that point, Ms. Brownlow also raised some very good points, which was that, you know, if we're going to be spending the amount of money we're talking about spending on these playgrounds, we should get the kids involved. You recommended, you know, have the kids try out some of this equipment before we spend a quarter million dollars, four hundred thousand dollars on this. And so there's, I think we felt at that time, there's a lot of research that had to be done. So, we adopted that plan for the ECE, and then we received a letter from the Hollywood Association on the thirteenth of March from Ms. Gersh. And she outlined that the Hollywood Association had a number of concerns. One was with insurance, that we cover their insurance, we agreed to do that. One was to remove a dead tree if it was necessary in the installation, we agreed to that. One was giving them the plans and letting them, you know, make some suggestions, we did that. And then the final one was, they said we wanted, you know, they were told that these, the K-5 was going to occur jointly with the pre-K, that was their understanding. And so this is the first time that we heard as a board, I believe, that this was, these two in their mind was conjoined, we didn't know that. And so we responded, you know, that this, as Rich was saying earlier, this is our part of our strategic plan, which we adopted in January, that this is our second priority facilities. We're intending to do this, but we want to have a district-wide plan and really think this through before we jump into it. So, that's kind of what precipitated then the meeting that Rich and I had. And I think our intention was to persuade them that our intention was to, you know, our intention is to do this across the district, but we wanted to do, you know, to have a systematic plan before we do that. So that's, that's kind of where we are at the moment, I think.
And that's accurate, and I appreciate you, Jeff, researching those exact details, because I think it's important for this board to understand how we got to this point. In that meeting, we were being asked for a guarantee. And at that point, we didn't feel like we had the authority to give a guarantee, because the committee has not done the work yet. So what we did is we expressed to them that that work was in process. We went back to the strategic plan and said, it is, this is a fresh strategic plan, this board just went through this process, and playgrounds are on the strategic plan, so we're committed to doing this. But we're in no way ready to sign a contract to an exact date, because the committee hasn't done the work yet. If we were going to do that, if we were going to commit to something as a board, to that, to one specific community group, why do we have the committee? Why did we assemble this committee to do the research?
Or more importantly, why do we have a plan, if we're not going to follow it? Thank you guys for coming to this meeting, I appreciate it. And I think, yes, Jeff, looking back at it, maybe we should have included them in the beginning, but we are where we are now. And it looks like we can't go forward this year. That said, are we going to talk about whether we're going to go Plan B and start exploring options on our land? And are we intending to look at this for this year, for next year? This is obviously prime time, because we'd obviously have to put a halt on the paving project we have pending.
That's a good point. Just one point of historical reference. Kurt Prebble preceded Kim Heffner. Kurt Prebble represented to the administration that he'd had plenty of conversations with the HCA, and there was no issue about us using additional land. Kristin Didio was a member of HCA and was also a member of the playground committee. There was almost a welcoming spirit being expressed by her during our playground committee meetings, that our use of additional land was anticipated, welcomed, and just part of the plan. So, I mean, I think that needs to be recognized, that, yeah, it looks like we didn't do a good amount of due diligence, but we were receiving signals at multiple points in time that didn't indicate we needed to do a greater depth of due diligence. And so, what's happened recently is a surprise.
They were more than just signals, they were direct communications by our administrators. But I don't, I don't think, we're still at this point, as Rachel just noted, and, you know, with the benefit of hindsight, Jeff's point is correct, that we should have communicated directly with that board, from board to board, just to make sure that that piece was in place.
I think one thing that we did not understand, and I think this is the piece that we missed, is that the Hollywood Association is not the District 96 Association. They are not, they are not there to provide land and services for District 96 as a whole. We weren't thinking that way. We were thinking, okay, these are all students, the difference is, you know, the Hollywood Association is, you know, specifically charged with representing the interest of the residents of Hollywood. So that's their constituency, and most of the ECE kids are not from Hollywood, they're from elsewhere in the district. And so, to us, it all looked the same, and, you know, we were in good faith, but to them, it didn't look the same. They thought, okay, you're putting in a playground, a new playground for kids that are, most of them are not, you know, living in our area, and you're not committing to put the playground in for the kids that are living in our area. So that's, I think the crux of the matter, that I don't think we fully appreciated until we had these conversations.
And in fact, Mr. Schecknader, the president of the Hollywood Citizens Association, wrote to us not too long ago, and I'm just going to read a bit of the letter, he sent it to the board as well as a number of other people, stating that he's, the HCA is committed to making sure the K-35 students, who are primarily Hollywood residents, benefit from our offer of land with the replacement of the K-35 playground equipment. As a neighborhood organization board composed of members who have had, have or will have children in Hollywood Elementary, we are obligated to look out for the best interests of all Hollywood students. We do not believe it would serve Hollywood children to build a brand-new preschooler playground, which most would not be able to use, next to one that is in need of replacement or has a timeline for replacement. So as Jeff noted, the Hollywood Community Association is not the Hollywood School Association, and it's not D-96. When our mission is clearly every school within the district, that is not their mission.
I can appreciate that.
Have we had an agreement with HCA about the use of that land prior to the present?
No.
I don't, the only form of agreement that I am apprised of is an insurance. Their name is additional insured on our liability policy. And that is, you know, that establishes the, you know, a protection for the owners, the HCA, against any injury on the property. Is that sufficient enough going forward? Or should we have a, say if we would go, should we have an agreement?
Well, that's the pleasure of the board.
Well, what's your record?
Probably yes.
What's that?
The answer to that is probably yes.
Yes.
Absolutely.
So that would be maybe the fourth item?
I think that's absolutely right. I think Ray does, but Rachel's making is, we absolutely need to have an agreement with them. So they, we outline, you know, what their responsibilities and rights are, what our responsibility and rights are, so that everything is very clear and there's no room for disagreement. I think that's certainly something we absolutely have to do, I think.
Well, that, and I think that, I think very hesitant to build on anybody else's land in the future, because of the risk that even though, yes, you should have, you're absolutely right, Randy, we should have a written agreement about whose responsibilities are what. The potential is, there could be a new board at HCA a year from now, and they could cancel that, and they can over, outvote that. And here we are, we have structures on that particular piece of land. So I think if we can avoid doing that in the future, that's probably best for this district overall.
Did, I don't know, did someone want to, I see Ms. Heffner is not here, I know she had some thoughts, I mean, I don't know, when someone wanted to speak to her. The HCA, one of the things they did is they proposed alternative locations, or suggested we look at alternative locations on the land, living in that land we do have, and I know that Ms. Heffner had some thoughts, I don't know.
At this point, she would prefer not moving forward with alternative locations, specifically the one right between the bleacher area, the back of the building, and that one corner, for numerous reasons, because there's so many, you know, question marks out in terms of what we should be doing, where it should be. At this point, she would not be recommending anything to be done immediately. And I think we received something from the PTA president confirming this same position.
I think, as unfortunate as it is, we can't have the early learners playground there. That's what it seems like today. I think we need to let the committee continue to do their work, and in the meantime, what we can do is continue communicating with the HCA board. I for one recognize that that's their land, and they certainly have the ability to say what they want to with it. And, you know, it seems like there's been a long mutually beneficial relationship between the school board, Hollywood school, and the HCA. And I think that that's something that I for one want to continue and want to work on.
That's right.
I share Ms. Heffner's sentiment about moving too fast here. We might, we might have a possibility on our land, which is great, and we definitely have the playground committee look into it, aside from the whole paving situation. I feel that if we move and make decisions, I think there's too many questions around that to make a well-thought-out plan, decision, when that's part of our mission anyways, that we're going to plan something. So, I would, I would second that.
She doesn't want a knee-jerk response.
Right. I feel like it's very reactionary.
A short-term solution to a longer-term problem.
I agree, Rich, with your approach, but I would not rule out the fact that we may want to use their land, and that in order to do so, that we should be open to an agreement with them.
Yeah, I know. I think the playground committee should look at all options, the option of anything on our land, the option of what can we do with the HCA to create, you know, to get to an agreement. I think that would lead the charge of that committee and Martha coming in. That's the way I view it, I don't think we're going to rule out anything at this point.
The land agreement would probably be something that I would guess the superintendent would want to take charge of, I guess, rather than the playground committee, I guess.
Right, right, that's right. And Martha coming in, I would, I feel like this would be a great, you know, a great place for her to step in and create.
The one fly in the ointment here, though, as Rachel indicated, is the, if we're planning to repave the parking lot, then we wouldn't want to repave the parking lot, and then decide next year, we want to put the playground in that corner and then rip it all again. That's the one thing that sort of makes it tricky.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't like that corner. I took a look at it, and I did read the three letters by the HCA people, Kristin Didio, and they all concurred that they didn't like it, and now we're hearing that Kim Heffner doesn't like it. So, I-
Well, I don't know if she doesn't like it, she just doesn't want to-
Jump on it.
There's a lot of moving pieces here. Because the information that we received was, hey, there's some consensus for that other location. So that's why, you know, I popped over there and looked at it over the weekend, maybe others did the same. But, you know, certainly, we don't, we don't want to, we don't want to rush this decision. You know, as much as we wanted to have a solution for the early learners, we all saw the importance of that. We want it there, but we don't need to rush that decision at this stage of it.
Sure.
A couple of points of information, we did investigate the idea of perhaps installing the equipment there and then moving it. That would require probably about a sixteen to eighteen thousand dollar cost, because there's investment in hosts, and then there would be a lot of labor dismantling the equipment and then moving it. So it is significantly costly to move it. Another point of information is that the existing K-5 playground equipment has been inspected by a certified playground inspector. We've engaged those professional services, and in fact, a report has been issued regarding every playground. And there are some things that we need to do, but there aren't any issues that the playground inspector found that are not things that we could do within the next, you know, sixty to ninety days even. And, you know, in other words, they're not pressing or urgent. The major concern the inspector had with the existing Hollywood playground is the lack of a barrier between the playground space and the parking area. So he's strongly recommending that we do something to create some type of a, I don't know what you call it, a bollard system or something that would be an added safety measure. So I don't really, I haven't taken that any further, and it's kind of a work in progress, but we are, we are working on trying to be responsive to the concerns that were raised by the safety inspector. But none of those concerns were really all that, you know, the caution that he's communicating is not, is not serious.
We have a number of other topics to cover here, and I don't want to cut off any conversation if anybody has any more comments about this particular topic, but in the interest of time, I-
We can move on.
Go ahead.
So are we at consent, are we all kind of feeling the same thing, though? I mean, are we all at kind of a consensus that this is going to wait? And then, I mean, I don't think we've addressed the-
We need to bring back other options for you.
Yeah.
And we'll be doing that.
Okay.
And that will be a product of the playground committee, or of the administration?
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily?
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily.
Okay.
All right. The less I say, the better it'll be.
Really?
Yes.
I'm not sure there was a general comment. I think it was very specific about girl.
I just have to add a little humor and allow me to-
Do you want to make T-shirts out of that, Samir?
We're going to miss him.
Could we cut on that on a daily basis?
I'd have to much longer to pick on grubs.
Okay.
All right. Thank you for doing all that.
Thank you.
Okay, Dave, is that David or is that you?
Let me, let me address this, because I did the research with Mike McTaggart.
Okay.
I'd like to welcome Judy, who's our food services manager, who's joined us and been patiently waiting for this topic. Because you're interested in a food vendor for the district, I called Mike McTaggart. I think, Rachel, you were recommending the Quest program for us to look into, so I-
I just wanted to stand corrected. I wasn't recommending it. I wanted to follow up on the initial presentation we had and what it was all about.
Yeah, and he did a presentation like two years ago or-
Right, right, okay.
So Mike remembered, you know, the district, and he said at this point, he is maxed out in terms of RB High School and settling out. He's, he's doing Comerick, District 95, he's got, he's got a couple of elementaries. He could not satellite out to our district at this point. He told us if, if we wanted to do it, we have to invest $75,000 in food warming and refrigeration equipment. We would have to guarantee 80 hot meals per building of our three elementary buildings, 240 hot meals for the three buildings, and it costs about $4.50 a meal. He also indicated we'd have to have two part-time employees as servers and ticket takers in each one of the three buildings, and depending on the volume of the building, we may need to buy a van and transport meals and pay for a driver. So those would be costs that we would be incurring that would not be part of that $4.50 and part of a relationship with a outside vendor. And then what I did is I summed up my conversation, sent it to Mike. I said, "Mike, is this an accurate representation of what we said?" And he said, "Yes." He said he could potentially satellite this out of Hinsdale High School, which I think that would be a long way to bring meals every day, but he said he does, he has done these things over 30 miles. So that is a possibility. Along with this topic came up, Randy raised the topic of the quality of choices. This is something that we talked about in the wellness committee. We've talked about a lot this year in terms of the healthy choices students have, and that's why, you know, I, you know, asked Judy to join us. I think that's something that we, in our free and reduced lunch program, we satellite now out to our three elementary buildings on a daily basis. Can you tell us about the volume of our three, three buildings? How many lunches do we prepare?
Well, at the beginning of the school year, we're not quite sure how many students will be taking the free lunch.
Right.
So say Ames has 60 children on the register for free and reduced, so we'll send out 60 lunches. As time goes on, we realize a lot of those students do not want the lunches. Their, their parents are happy to pack the lunch for them. So it kind of weeds down, and like right now, at this point, we're sending out, for all three schools, we're sending out 20 lunches max.
Okay. So we've really reduced from what we started off with to what we actually do?
Right. I mean, I don't know. I think some people like to take advantage of the other costs.
That's not typical. That's not typical.
You know, you get other benefits probably from being a free or reduced candidate for the, you know, maybe books or whatever other options there are. So, and since we really can't, you know, call up and say, "Are you going to be taking, you know, this lunch every day?" You know, we initially send out the max, and then we, it just winds down, and, you know, that's usually, this year it ended up with about 20 per building. For the three buildings.
For the three buildings, so. Very minimal at this point.
So, Griff, you mentioned that it was a recommendation of the wellness committee.
Right. It was something that, the whole idea of a salad bar came out of that wellness committee.
I would just like to add that it is in our strategic plan.
Absolutely.
As well, and that's-
Absolutely.
That's a correction from the previous meeting.
The fact that healthy diets are part of the plan, right? Healthy nutrition.
Yes. Healthy choices, I think the word choice is-
Healthy choices, right.
I wanted to follow up, I wanted to thank David and Griff for all the work you guys have done on this, and it sounds like that the Quest thing, we haven't got a basic understanding that's not going to work for a number of reasons.
No, for us, yeah.
And if we were to do food service, probably would have to go out for bid. The reason why I was bringing it up is not so much, it's definitely not a criticism of the central Hauser program. It's more of a, it's a criticism of the three schools where we don't have a program whatsoever. And if we could get a program in that school, because I think that the lunch program is the least of the concerns, probably it's the parents packing the lunch, and I could be guilty of this too, that are our biggest problem. So it's, it's more just, again, I want to know if, again, we could see this as possible, if we could do some kind of blended program with doing a vendor for those three schools and still continue the lunch program as a central Hauser, that would be an ideal situation so that we could provide the service for the schools that don't have anything. But again, I don't know what the community interest is, and-
Well, I asked Todd Gierman, how many, because he's our highest tenured principal. I said, "How many requests of parents at PTA meetings and just general, you know, interaction with parents have you had for a hot lunch program?" And he said, "Zero in three years."
What? Yes. Yes, but I just-
The question hasn't been asked.
The question, but not only that, being in the school system since I have a sophomore in high school, it's always been presented as it's not possible. We don't have the facilities, it's not an option. So that's why when, when we talked about, it didn't come up during the strategic planning committee, I think that it's been ingrained in everybody's mind.
It's been shut down so much that-
Right. Well, I think that's, yes, it's, look, it's a fact. It's not possible, it can't happen.
With money, anything can happen. You know, there's no question, we could do this, even through Quest.
But again, if you wanted to pay that kind of money.
I don't think the board would want to pay that kind of money. We couldn't recommend that.
To Quest. Plus, I took a look at their lunch menu at RB. I can't say it's the healthiest choices ever. But I think that if we were going to do this, I'd like to still see, and I remember a recommendation of the board, is we follow up and see, is the community interested as a whole?
But should we, and I'm just throwing this out there, should we wait for Martha to start and lay that out in the context of the, of the strategic plan, or are you suggesting that we-
I just, yeah.
That we work on it right now?
I would say just a survey to see is their general interest, and to know, is this something we want Martha to work on, or is it not something we don't, why bother? We got other fish to fry.
So Griff, you've worked in a number-
There we go.
You've worked in a number of districts, elementary and middle school, junior high. Could you give us a sense of, is it a common practice to, to offer a hot lunch to elementary students, and how-
It's less common than in high school and middle school. It's most common in high school and middle school where hot lunch programs are provided. The larger districts tend to have, you know, more facilities available for hot lunches.
But like in the whiskey group that we, Merle was, or Miss Brown was mentioning earlier, Ms. Ed, what franchise would that have?
I would have to ask.
A lot of it is facility-based. I mean, I was principal of the school where I had a cafeteria and a hot lunch program, and I was principals of schools where I didn't. So, and if you're not a K-12, and you don't have a high school to rely on to help you farm it out, it becomes a little more challenging. So River Forest does not have a hot lunch program. They have, in any of the elementary schools, it's only-
But they do have a middle school, correct?
The middle school does.
Right.
Yeah. And so they do, the PTO does, similar to what our PTO did, was one day a week of vendor kind of lunch. I think here they might not do it quite as often, but that the PTL ran one time a week. In Glenview, they were equipped with cafeterias in the elementary buildings, so there was a hot lunch program, but they had full cafeterias.
So, not to muddy the water, but one of the, one of the possibilities here is that the lowest bidder would be our own, our own staff-
Yeah.
And our own operation. In other words, in other words, if you take our current operation, which is set up to do what it does, and augmented to incorporate hot lunches for the other buildings, that's not, that's not a transition that could be done without an investment in equipment-
That's what I was going to follow up on.
All the things that my view-
And staff-
Right.
And transportation equipment, all of the things that an outside vendor would also have to deal with. So all I'm saying is that, is that we might bid on it ourselves as an, as an augmentation of our own in-house, but that's not really been asked of Judy in the, in the past. I've talked with Judy about it from a, you know, just a conceptual standpoint, but, you know, we all know that we're set up to do only what we're accomplishing. And if we wanted to do more, then we could do more, but it would require an investment in equipment and people and transportation and those types of things. So that might be an option to explore, but you're, I'm gathering to what you're, I'm gathering what, that what you're asking is for a kind of a testative of the market.
Right, right.
See what the demand is.
Right.
And that, that-
Find out if there's interest.
Yes, yeah.
That's a legitimate question to ask.
And as I mentioned the last time this, this conversation, you know, came up, I think you really need to ask the respondent to the questionnaire, how many days per week do you think you actually would buy a lunch?
Sure.
And, and ask them.
And what you would pay.
And sincerely.
Yeah, to get the volume.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
Because you have to predict how much of a market you've got.
Most paying $2.90 in Oak Park, correct?
$2.90.
For a hot lunch, right?
That's reasonable.
$2.90 is in $4.50, I would say, most parents would say that's not reasonable.
But again-
Yes.
That's what I thought.
That schools, those schools have the cafeteria space, and the smaller schools get it from within the system.
Okay. So, so I think you're asking us to check out the interest by parents currently.
That $2.90 number sounds to me like it'd have to be subsidized.
It might be by some of their free and reduced lunch pocket.
Oh, I'm sure it is, yeah. I'm sure it is.
They're a much larger district with a very different demographic.
Yes, yeah, very much so.
We just phrased it to just a year or so ago.
I think Judy makes a pretty yummy lunch for the price.
Yeah.
I eat quite often.
Say regardless of, say, say we don't plan to expand to the three elementary schools, but is there, should we, should we be looking to do more at Hauser with our school lunch program? And not, not necessarily quality, but should we invest in, in ovens and more equipment that would allow you to do a better job? And I guess that's a question that I would pose of the administration and the board.
That was answered by the current year budget. We bought some new ovens.
That's what I was going to say. I know, I noticed they did do that.
And the convection ovens that we purchased have been, have proven to be very beneficial to the operation.
That's right, we did that.
And there is a proposal within the current budget-
That's right.
The materials that were distributed to the board for a piece of serving equipment that Judy, Judy's asked to, to express her, Judy has explained that there are certain high-cost pieces of equipment that are currently doing fine, but the board should be apprised that if you want to replace a dish machine, it's going to cost a significant amount of money. Luckily, our dish machine is doing just fine. There's, in other words, there's a lot of, a lot of equipment that we've already invested in. It's Judy's job to express whether or not we're getting to the breaking point on some of these pieces of equipment. But the new convection ovens did, did help the operation.
And then we also got like a warmer box, which like come in handy with, April was just talking to, speaking with me today about how the schedule-
The schedule is trying to work out.
And so that's going to come in handy with the quick turnaround in between the lunches and things like that. So, and another big part of, you know, what the staff also does is they wash the tables. You know, we wash the tables about five times a day. We wash before service, in between service, after service, we're cleaning up after, you know, we do some maintenance work in between as well, or, you know, which sometimes when you'd have outside vendors come in, they're not always, you know, going to be anxious to be cleaning up the messes, you know, that would probably fall more on maintenance and things like that.
A lot of schools have a dedicated custodian.
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
We have, we have food service staff members doing some work that in other schools might be done by the custodian.
And I'm very happy to say too, I mean, I'm proud with the facility here, is that we have very little waste, it's because we wash the dishes, we use real silverware, so we don't have huge piles of, you know, styrofoam containers, you know, things like that.
That's great.
Very minimal on garbage too, which is nice.
So our action item on this is that the administration is going to take steps to gauge interest and demand.
To poll the parents to see what their interest is.
Right. Very good. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you. So in this, if we do a polling, can we at least put some, like- Parameters? Or just some context to it about cost, you know, possible cost? Because I know if I just got a survey and said, "Would you be interested in hot lunch?" Absolutely.
Well, that's the danger. I don't know how, we may ask the question, and we'll have to hear the expert on polling to help me.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, expert. But I would think you're not-
What answer do you want?
You're not going to get the true sense of if they said it's going to cost X amount of money of, you know, of the school.
I would say a range of $3 to $5, I guess, would be, you know, reasonable.
Or just even capital money, it'll, you know, money it's going to cost a school to provide this might change different answers.
Yes.
I think it's so important to lay it out in the right context, that this is research, and we're not in a position to commit to it, but we're gauging interest. Would you be interested under these circumstances?
It would also be, it'd also be beneficial, and I don't, I don't think we have anything else at the moment, if we have other areas of interest, not just food service, but is there-
Sure.
Interest in this or this. That way it feels more like we're just testing the waters, and we're doing some research to guide us over the next-
Well, to answer the original question, should you give it to Martha or to us? I think it's Martha's. No. But you know I was going to say that, so.
But I completely hear your point, just to let you know, like I, I completely understand that, you know, where you're coming from, like, it's nice that, you know, my kids go to Central, it's nice knowing that I have that background, you know? If I forgot and all of a sudden, oh, here's, just, just here's your $3. So I get it, I get the point, and I get what, you know, why you brought it up, so.
Right?
Well, I've done a terrible job of managing time so far, so.
I mean, I gave you my eight minutes, Rich.
So, moving on to the next topic, your artist-in-residence proposal for Blight Park PTA.
Yeah, you see, you see the Blight Park proposal, only because there's been sensitivity to the appearance of Blight Park. I thought I would bring this as informational to the board. I don't see it as any major problem. The three-by-three sign walk to Blight Park will be a mosaic sign, but that will be signage that could be removed on a panel. It's not, you know, we're not breaking into the brick or anything. Again, I think everything here is in line with what you want to maintain at Blight Park, so I really don't know.
Question, do we have to pass this by the Historic Preservation Commission, too?
I don't believe so.
I, I don't know enough about the-
There's nothing permanently adhered.
Right.
If it's reversible, you do not.
That's, that's my thought, yeah.
That's right. And what was described, that you're using the mortar joints, the mortar joints can all be reversed, you're not drilling in the brick. So that's my understanding of it, but you probably want to, you know, pass it by experts.
We could run it by them.
Thank you, I learned something today.
I have no issue with that, but.
Okay. Any other discussion on the artist-in-residence program?
Looks good, mate.
Very good. The HERO student management system?
James is artifacts.
Yeah, I was just patiently waiting.
All right, good.
So I was approached earlier in the year from company HERO. It's basically student management software, tracking tardies, and you can assign like dollars or bucks or points at school or so forth. And I ignored them. It was back in the fall. And then I found out that RB took them on to start tracking their tardies, and then talked to people at RB and asked how it was going. So then I ended up talking to the sales rep from HERO, talked to Ms. Bromo, Mr. DeFano about it as well. And started kind of just exploring, does this HERO software fit at Hauser Junior High? So I brought a visual.
I was wondering where you were holding it.
So I started since October, keeping track of the tardies that I get from Ms. Heine, our attendance secretary. And this is the amount of tardies we have had to first hour here at Hauser since October. Now, this isn't just all of the tardies, this is four tardies and above. So if a student has one, two, or three, they never get on a sheet of paper and given to me. If they have four and above, I get it. And it's a lot. So what I think would be beneficial with the HERO software is to streamline the process. So when I started looking at tardies here, I basically tried to think of a way that I can communicate at home that your son or daughter has been tardy, here are the dates that your son or daughter has been tardy, and then we started issuing consequences. So at tardy number five, you get a lunch detention, and then it kind of moves on up, and we communicated that out. What I learned though, and this is against no one, but the last two, three years, nothing was ever done with tardies. Ms. Heine would spend probably, between Ms. Heine and myself, eight hours, give or take a week on tardies. Nothing was ever done. So what she does is she, the students sign in in the morning, she had that handwritten in, then she takes a pad of paper, she handwrites them down, and then she puts them into the Power School. And then she runs a report of four plus for me. She takes that report, she circles them all for me, and then she then hands them to me. Well, previous, they just took those papers and put them on the shelf or threw them out, never did anything for it. So she was very appreciative that we were actually holding families accountable, which I think is needed, right? So if we're expecting students to be here on time and we're hoping parents can help and assist that to get students here on time, then we should hold them accountable. And I started doing that by, maybe parents at Hauser have gotten this, a Google form. So then I fill out a Google form, so she hands me the paper, I fill out all the information, I include the dates, and then I wrote a kind of like a script for it and then a mail merge letter that would fill in all the information for me. So it was a standard letter every single time. It wasn't just a generic email that it, when a parent got that email, it was kind of like on a letterhead that I made, and it said, "To the parents or guardians of," and then it would fill in the blank of the name, "Your son or daughter has been tardy," and then it fills in all the dates, and then it shows when their lunch detention will be and so forth. And then I did that with consequences as well for lunch detentions and so forth. But to get to the HERO part, it was still just a way that I think will speed up the process and will become more efficient for us. So we put it into our Hauser budget. The budget information is, was provided for you on that document. It's a per-student fee. And basically what the software does is it puts a barcode, and I talked to Mr. DeFano about it. We're not asking students to wear an ID to school every day, but they carry their laptop generally. And then we put that barcode on the name tag of their laptop, and it becomes a scanner. So when students enter, we scan them in, and then there's a little printer, it prints out their pass, Ms. Heine can just hand them the pass, and then they can go on. What HERO also does is that it sends a push notification or an email to the parents saying, "Your son or daughter was tardy this morning." So then I get a lot of some time, I get emails or phone calls, I drop them off on time, you know, then I have to show that this was, they signed in actually at this time. So there'll be a lot of more reliable communication back. Also, the complaint is if we have 20 or 15 students, let's say, in a given morning who are tardy, so some kids can get to the end of the line, and by the time kids sign in and get through the door and stop for the pledge, stop, you know, all the things, get up to their locker, they're losing time because it takes time for the kids to sign in. So that will speed up that process as well. And it'll save Gwen and myself many hours that we can dedicate to other tasks that we are asked to do during that day. So it'll speed up the tardy process, I believe. I can also go in and set the push notification to inform the parent of the lunch detention as well. So it's basically doing what I'm already doing now, but just taking away the kind of the system that I created and just expediting the process.
I have a witness. I pulled in this morning at like 7:38, there was a girl crossing her bicycle to come to school, and I saw her in the office signing in at like 8:05. This is why you need HERO, because she clearly was here on time but just didn't get herself in the school.
Yeah, what was she doing?
Right. She was socializing somewhere.
Yeah, so we've talked to people over at RB as well, and I know it was in the newspaper. It is speeding up the process of their tardies. They've gone a little bit further than we will go, where they have their security guards have hit printers, printers basically, and they're tracking tardies to class, so kids are kind of running all over the place to get to class on time. I'm not proposing that I'm gonna wear a hit printer out and all that. I just think that process of them coming in, scanning, grabbing their ticket and going will be beneficial. Now, the other thing that, so this is a lot of paper here, we also this year did PAW points. So it's our PBIS initiative for catching students doing something good or just rewarding students for doing good random acts of kindness or just playing good character. We run all of our PAW points as well on paper, and then we cut them all because we only have them, you know, by, you know, size. And then this HERO allow, so that system will allow us also to assign PAW points digitally, so it'll be like a dashboard. So parents at home actually can then log into their dashboard, not only to see tardies, but they also can see that their son or daughter has earned points. And then those points can still be used for rewards, or they can be used for a raffle like we're doing now. So we'll eliminate that copying and that cutting, and then when we found out they're middle school kids, they get a PAW point and they never turn it in. And we have school-wide initiatives and goals that we're trying to find kids to make sure they're involved in. So we actually go through and track students' names and so forth, just if we want to make sure that we're, no one's falling through the crack. This would automatically do that for us, so we can go and see, you know, if students are receiving the PAW points. Teachers can log in as one big dashboard and assign, if we have a spirit day, they can assign every kid a PAW point for dressing up. They also can get a QR code on their phone or something, and they can scan the kids just like the initial scanner. The last thing that the HERO does, and this would be an optional add-on, is it does a visitor check-in as well. And for an add-on fee, it does the sex offender registry list for all 50 states, and it gets updated every 24 hours. So if a visitor comes in, if you've ever gone to RB or a lot of schools, they take your ID from you and they scan it through a system like the Raptor system, and then you wear that lovely name tag with your picture on it. And I live in Indiana, so mine always takes forever because they, they're wondering why I'm out here. So this would be doing the same thing, but you just typed in their name, and then it checks to see if anything pops up. That's just a pure add-on. It can do a log on its own, but you can pay the additional fee to have that service. We would not get another printer, I've talked about that with Ms. Heine. We kind of like our big yellow visitor passes, so there could be an additional fee where you can get a separate printer to print that pass, but we like that big Hauser pass that we would just sign and then slap it on the visitor. So that's, we've put in our budget for next year. We think it'd be very beneficial. I guess that there's some extreme objections to it. I mean, it'd be wonderful for you to let us know. And I would have dialogue with all of you about that add-on. That's not something that, you know, we can talk about at any point, that's something that would be you find, because I know in the strategic plan, I believe safety is one of the issues, and just looking at schools, just making sure we keep our students safe with visitors and guests who come. So that is the HERO program. I think it'd be beneficial. I like it that RB is also using it, so parents will get, I think, comfortable with those push notifications. And RB is working it hard, when I go to meetings with them, they're working hard at it. We're trying to use common language and common forms, and just to make that transition smoother for parents and students. So if, I think if we get HERO, kind of getting kids used to it, then when they get to RB as well, it'd be a commonplace, so.
Thank you, Jason. I do think it's a great program for those of us with kids in high school, you know, getting that email when something happens, you know, is, is actually a good thing to get during the day because you know what's going on.
Yeah.
I find it beneficial, I don't know if you do.
I haven't gotten any emails.
Oh, God.
Rich hasn't gotten them either. What emails?
I've heard about this.
I think though, it's not just the notifications as well about the tardies, that's important, but, you know, having that dialogue with, you know, looking at the dashboard and maybe seeing that they've earned some PAW points, and then having that conversation of, hey, how'd you get a PAW point or something like that?
I think it does create a student-home connection.
Yeah, yeah, and I think it's easy to...
The only comment I have, and I know it's a lot of money, but it sounds like it's gonna be saving us money in the long term, where you are gonna be freed up to do bigger and better things? So that, for me, that's an upside, is that we are, I'd rather you not be doing this legwork personally.
It's like, you said eight hours between you and Ms. Heine. Ms. Heine. How does that break down?
So every day between the time of when students walk in.
Right.
I would say between 8:00 and well past 9:00, she is still going through the tardies, still trying to answer the door, trying to do her tasks. She enters it into Power School, and then she'll print it off and hand it to me, and then if I have a stack, I go through each one.
Yep.
And then I send it off to the parents. And then through that process, if we're getting multiple ones, then I put in a phone call.
So is it, is it mostly her time or mostly your time?
Um, I would say it's, it's probably mostly on her time, but it takes up a lot of mine because I feel it is my responsibility to, to, like I said earlier, hold people accountable, right? If we just put it on a shelf like I think it's been done in the past, then I'm not, I'm not doing the job that you all asked me to do.
Yeah.
And then I think too, that our eighth graders have never been, in a sense, held that accountable for tardies. So it's establishing a new culture that we want you here on time, we want you prepared. When I was talking about with Ms. Clive, where we said, we want people enthusiastic to be here, right? So they come in the morning, ready to learn, instead of, you know, running late, and then they're already missing a potential bell ringer to start class in first hour. So timing-wise, it all kind of depends. I still get all the, I get the excuses, you know, traffic, train, things like that. We do allow excused tardies, it just puts the ownership on the parents to call in and say, "This happened this morning, please excuse us." But I would say probably to, if I look at it, make sure I assign the detention, contact on the, on Tuesdays, Thursdays, the teachers, yeah, the time just adds up.
And so the stack here is that the instances of more than four tardies, is that...
Four or more.
Four or more.
Four is our warning letter, and then five on, as a consequence.
So what are the number, I mean, how many are in your stack there? Is that, I mean, I'm not asking you to count off the happy, do you know, or is that like...
Yeah, so I can run that data.
Okay.
I can run the data and let you know.
And is that, is that one per student, or is if a student has five, they get, there's five pieces of paper in there, or how does that work?
So every, so if a student has four, it's in here, and then if they have five, I know...
Let's say they have 10. Let's say they have 10. Does that mean they got six pieces of paper in your stack there?
Yeah.
Okay, so what does the distribution look like? Is it, is it mostly, like, some kids are tardy all the time and most kids are never tardy, or how does that work?
It's a good mix. We have our frequent late arrivals. But then we do have a good chunk that, you know, you're talking about every trimester we reset their count. So, you know, like if you think in 12 weeks, we have kids who get to that four mark, and then I think they realize the next one's gonna be a consequence, and sometimes it gets spaced out over time. But I, since I have it all in a Google sheet, because I do, you know, with the auto, the mail merge, I could easily pull the data.
Yeah, I think you could see a histogram, like the number of students that are tardy and times, basically, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So I can see the benefit of, of you being hands-on with this and picking up the phone and calling parents as opposed to it all being on the computer.
Yeah, so that wouldn't stop. So if we have, if we get to that point where it's a chronic tardiness, where I see that it's, that's the behavior, then I would still be able to look at our numbers, and then I still would pick up the phone.
So you, you would still be monitoring...
Yeah, I can still see, oh yeah, for sure, because I still, on Tuesdays and Thursdays, still need to look at the list to figure out who I'm sending to lunch detention, and then who, as they get to the higher number, who has an after-school detention. So just because it goes digital doesn't mean my hands are off of it. It just frees up that time and just makes us more efficient. But then it also allows us to track, instead of just the negative behavior, it allows us to track a lot of positive behaviors.
Sure.
And there's a ton of capabilities on it. I mean, you could track entering into a dance, you can track, you know, there's a lot of anything in barcode tracking.
All this, the information is stored where, where's the stored all this data?
Right, so Mr. DeFano was in that meeting with us, so basically, it works with our Power School. So it, so the information that we scan and upload is the information just from that Power School, so that push notification comes from that contact information. They actually work with Power School, they have an agreement with each other. So then that information can get automatically logged in to go into our Power School as well.
So is that stored offsite then, somewhere in the cloud, basically? Is that how it works, or is that, is that stored on some server in the district, or I assume?
Yeah, no, it is separate, and we have, given that the information sharing agreement.
So it's basically another data set about kids in addition to their academic performance. Now we're gonna have stuff having to do with their tardiness, with their PAW points, all the rest, stored out there in the cloud.
Tardiness is already in Power School.
Tardiness is in Power School.
All of this is already in Power School, it's just an easier way to get it there.
Although, I'm still gonna, I already asked you this question earlier this week. I'm gonna ask a teacher question. Is there someone out in front of the building wrangling people and saying, "Hey, let's go, let's get you excited."
If you come to Hauser.
So who was the girl at 7:38 and why?
She's probably hanging out before she walks around in the front.
I have another question. What have you guys done globally as a school to advertise, like, be on time campaign? Can we see something about what we're enforcing to these parents and families to let them know this is so important? I really want to hear some of that before I make a $6,000 purchase. Because I could see robotics kits. It's hard for me, I could see, what do we spend this money on? And it's not a one-time, it's a yearly $4,000 cost.
And coming to Linda's point, Linda's point, a good point, which is that we, you know, it's like not a good use of your time to be calling people.
Right, not that you should be, but...
But same time...
How are we stopping the tardies? Instead of crapping them?
If we have a secretary that's spending five or six hours a week, I guess my question is, if now we're gonna use technology to do some of the work that she was doing, does that mean that we can, you know, cut down the full-time equivalent number of staff? Because one of the things I seem, I notice here is a lot, is that we add technology, which is great, and it should make life easier, labor-saving, but it never seems like we ever see that in terms of like, well, now we have, we shouldn't need as many staff.
A little bit of the FTE.
Right, so that's, that's the question I have, because we're gonna be spending on an ongoing basis, $4,000 to $5,000 a year, every single year on this, should we be able to cut a little bit of staff, you know, to save money on that regarding...
Yeah, I wouldn't think by getting HERO would eliminate our, I think would free up her to do more of her tasks that we still are asking, you know, her to do throughout the day, and allow her to do it a little bit more efficiently throughout the day. So I think if we eliminate, like, if we eliminated, I think she would be then more of that face for our school, for our visitors, for helping students, you know, to do her job as, you know, like as she's supposed to be doing in the office. And, you know, to answer your question about, we're out every morning, I can't answer to every other principal because I don't go out to the other schools in the morning.
No, I don't just mean physically, I mean, are we doing Facebook, Facebook, a campaign really, to say...
I think I'm a very active Facebook assistant.
I know, and I actually watch your feed.
There, I have, early in the year, there were several emails talking about tardy.
I'm just saying, you can go, you can go big with, it's important to be there all the time.
It was very advertised.
I'll also say, some of it is the developmental age of the kids.
I get it, I, you know, I work with that age too. And I guess what my, my question is, do they think it's okay to be late because nothing happens the first five minutes? What are we doing as a team to say these kids, "I am so excited to get to class, I would never want to be late." And it's just a question I'm gonna pose, how are we engaging these families? And I want to see it before I make a commitment to something like this.
Well, April, you started the year off real well with some Hauser, what was the motto?
Attack the day.
Attack the day. I mean, that's pretty strong. I mean, that's pretty strong.
I like that.
And I do see both of you out there every day and you seem to be kind of hurrying the kids in the front door. So, you know, the message is there. You know, there's going to be cracks in the system.
Obviously, but you know, is it worth tracking every little thing? I just don't know. I'd rather spend it on something that's going to be, not that it's not impactful, but it's a choice. We have to make what we save our money on.
I don't want to come off rude, so then would I stop? Then who's, I guess, then is that going to be part of then my job? You know, still in like where I'm going to take that time to hold people accountable? Because I think that's what happened. I think it got to the point where, and I don't want to sound rude, but I think it got to the point where that's why I just got put on the shelf. Because it takes up the time. Would I rather be in a classroom or I'd rather be walking around so much so?
The way I feel, and I hear your point, but the way I feel is a little bit like, a little bit what's being said is kind of getting in the weeds of this and I kind of think if, if this, if the administration thinks this is a good idea and it's going to create a well, a more managed office, then we look at it for a year, do it for a year, see the differences. Because I, I would agree, I would, nothing against your office, but I would say there are times you walk in and it, it's, how many people are coming in to drop off a gym uniform? You know, teacher appreciation, teacher appreciation week going on, people jumping in to drop off fruit salad, which I have to do in the morning? Like stuff like this, that your secretary then is like constantly, constantly moving, so.
I get it, but we as a board are also charged with making a financial comparison and what we want to spend our money on, so we have to think about.
Right, I may take your point, that is a good point, but the problem is I think what happens is that we always add, but we never say, okay, now we should get some efficiencies here. That never happens, so I mean...
Not that it's not, I get it. It makes it faster to get through the door, I get it. But we just, I have to make some thoughtful, you know...
Efficiencies for, all right, but anyway, now the secretary is doing one less hour of work per day.
Well, she's doing, she's doing it, she's doing something differently. Maybe she's helping Merrill to write a report or...
But essentially, we freed up five hours a week. We freed that up, basically. So we should come out somewhere else, it seems to me.
And we get away from, from paper and it goes, you know, online.
No, I'm not saying it's a bad system, I'm just saying I hesitate every time we add a new thing that will never go away.
Right, right. It's another licensing fee that we have to pay, I agree.
And it's $4,000 every year. It makes me think, you know, a lot of questions.
These are all very good questions. For me, listening to Jason's presentation here, I think I don't want Jason or any other staff pushing unnecessary paper and flipping unnecessary paper and put your check here or tally here. So I look at it as an efficiency, although I'm very concerned about continuing to add 5,000.
Well, I think Jason's a high-level employee, he's got more valuable things to do with his time.
Right, I get it.
I totally agree with that. I'm just wondering about the other five hours, six hours, that to me, that's paperwork I'm recommending.
So would it be fair to say that we may want to understand how, if staff isn't spending that amount of time each week on that topic, what else are they going to spend their time on? How does that free them up for more efficient or smarter work?
And you're not going to get the answers tonight?
Right.
No.
So we can bring it back.
Right.
Well, and I had a question, just the budget had a line on it for 6,500, but it's like 62. Is this the extra three in case we make the decision to add the...
Yeah, originally it was, originally it had that on in there.
Right, okay. I was checking. So that's an option, okay.
Yeah, and the original quote was for 600 students where we could be at 625 and then there's, you know, they put in their, they put in training. I don't know if we would even need the training. I think it's one of those things where I could go to RV and see how it's running, figure it out myself and go through it. So I just wanted to present it and just share thoughts with you. Like I said, it was one of those things where I was kind of like, no, 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 and then seeing RV use it and then seeing just the time that it does take, you know, to hold people accountable, I thought it was just something worth looking into, so.
I think too, I mean, I know we're focusing on the tardies and the negative side, but I see the positive, to me, the positive in it is the pop points and the PBSS tracking because we've heard, I know in PTO meetings and things like that, teachers are giving out pop points to kids, but we can't completely track how they're being given out because they have to be turned back in. So again, that's the paper, so that's something to consider too, that it's not just the tardy tracking, but it's also that positive PBSS tracking and how we can make sure that we can, we're actually getting true data of what's being given out to kids.
Any other questions? Thank you so much for staying. Thank you, Miss May, appreciate it.
Now you can go.
Yeah, can I make one more comment? I think when we have staff agenda items, we should try and push them towards the front just out of respect for their time and their days.
Totally agree.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
30 seconds, David.
Well, there's 163 pages of information and I'll bet we'll be done by 12:30.
Oh my God.
Mr. Deadline here.
Come on, Rich.
Guys, be efficient, okay, next time?
Oh, yeah.
It's a lot to digest. I think I can streamline your review at this point. I'd like to underscore that our budget development process, well, first of all, let's take a moment to recognize that we have an introductory section that is intended to be the big pictures. So taking time to look at the big picture is very important and it's so important that it inspires bar graphs. So you know we're to looking at the big picture when something has been made into a bar graph and property taxes and salaries and benefits are presented in that manner. And what I, in the interest of time, I would just say that if there's any page in this introductory section that you'd like to spend more time on, I could do that this evening. The material that I just sent, I think, is more of a streamlining of our conversation this evening. We divide the budget development process into responsibility codes and each individual administrator has their chart of accounts. And then they work on a computer program and render statements of justification. And what I've just distributed shows something kind of interesting. If you take all the administrators with all their responsibility codes, the difference between the FY '16 budget and the proposed FY '17 is a 3.91% increase. And the total dollars that we're talking about is $3,988, and that's $3,988 for FY '17 out of a projected $26,970,000. Well, what I just handed out has a total for FY '17 of 3.9889 and in the introductory section, you know, that is a, within the context of the entire budget, is 26, it's a portion of the $26,969. So where does all the rest of the money go? It goes to salaries and benefits, it goes to the IMR up at Social Security Fund, it goes to the operations and maintenance fund, it goes to a lot of other components of the budget. So even though we do involve everybody in the budget development process, at the end of the day, it is a slice of the pie, it's not the entire pie that administrators are working on. The 3.91%, if you exclude capital outlay, new and replacement equipment, which we just heard a presentation on, a proposal for new equipment, the increase is 3.49%. If you excuse Merrill Brownlow from the picture...
And all my new standards.
And all the curriculum and instruction initiatives that are built into her budget, the increase is 0.32%. And if you take out these areas that are closely scrutinized by the board, technology, curriculum instruction, capital outlay, we're actually talking about a 12.06% decrease. So, you know, putting that in context, when you hear a presentation from Merrill about cost initiatives, yes, it does have an impact and we're assuming when we're developing the budget process that your comfort level has already been established in these particular areas.
David, can I ask you a quick question here? Just before you move off this topic, your right-hand column there, percentage change budget FY '16 to FY '17, that doesn't seem to fit properly. You have a 3.91% change when the percentage change between the total budget for 2.8 million to 3.4...
That's the year-to-date, so look the column to the left of it.
Is where you're looking.
If you look at FY '16...
The budgeted and not the actual.
Got it, got it, sorry. Okay, go ahead.
It's 3.838 to 3.98. So the, so this is kind of the big picture of how we divide the budget and how the perspective changes when you take out these individual components. Special education is an area that, you know, Pam Shaw has to justify based upon students with IEPs and outplacement costs and LANSI services, all which are very large dollars. So the other thing I want to underscore...
So this $4 million is 3.98 million. That's, this is, does not include salaries or benefits, but it does include capital outlay, like if we do the...
Educational fund.
Just educational fund, not the paving, not the parking lot.
Right, not operations and maintenance fund, not capital projects fund. So the other thing, and if Dr. Powell wants me to end in two minutes, I can end in two minutes.
30 seconds.
The reason why I can end in two minutes, I think, is that this is your homework assignment. Your homework assignment is the very last eight pages, I'm sorry, 11 pages of this very large handout. Okay, the handout itself has the entire general ledger followed by all of the statements of justification rendered by the responsible administrators, sorted in the same order as the general ledger, as the first two sections. And then it's broken out into sections that are titled Purchase Services, Capital Outlay, and, or Supplies and Materials and Capital Outlay. Capital Outlay is the very last section. So if you go to the very last 10 pages, that's really your homework assignment as far as something that is going to need board approval. I guess I should also modify that to say that we're also going to spend a significant amount of time looking at software and Mr. Tofano will be given an opportunity to talk to the board about a proposal for the $300,000 of software that is being included in this budget. But starting on, starting with the capital outlay section, this is what is, you know, potential for further presentations just like you heard this evening. And if board members say, well, I'm uncomfortable with this particular initiative being proposed by an administrator, then we need your feedback and we need to understand that that will result in some follow-up and presentation by the administration to clarify what is going on when you talk about replacement of student desks that have not been replaced in nine years. If you'd like further clarification of that. The sorting of the capital outlay section is by responsibility code. So MA is April, May, and on page six of that printout is the HERO management system. So there are, there's a lot of money being proposed, $400,000. So whatever portion of that $400,000, you want to hear more information, you'd like a presentation on it, then we need to do that between now and when the budget gets adopted. And even tonight, if prior to this meeting, something jumped out at you, if you want to bring it up right now, that's fine, we can give you a tentative answer. Another thing I want to, or at least a preliminary answer, the other thing I want to emphasize is that this is a work in progress. We have had one administrative district office meeting to review all of the budgets. I've gone through all the budgets, I've flagged some things that I have questions about. I'm keeping a log of those things that I would like to have, you know, clarified. If there was something that I was really uncomfortable with, I've already made a change or, you know, worked with that principal and said, okay, let's change this, I'm not comfortable. But we have not had a chance as a district office team to run this through the ringer and put it under a magnifying glass or a microscope. So as with any budget development process, it takes time and this is, this is May, there will be changes to the materials that are in front of you and have been distributed to you. At this point in time, I have the ability to track every change. In other words, if an account number changes, I have a snapshot of the dollar amounts in every account in the system. So for Purchase Services, Supplies and Materials, Capital Outlay, I will provide you with a summary of accounts that changed since May 3rd. And, you know, that's so that you're aware of, okay, we're in the budget development process, what have we revisited? I already know that there's probably four or five accounts that I've already changed even from the materials that are right in front of you. And I'll provide you with the reason why those four or five accounts changed. So we could stay here till, for a long time.
We're done.
Or we could accept that this is your homework assignment to render communications to the administration for clarification at a future meeting. We don't have to adopt the budget until September.
September.
A tentative budget has to be put on public display in August. I have been in contact with the Riverside assessor, Fran Sitkowitz, and after, can you give me information about property taxes, what have you got so far? And the answer is no, I can't really share anything yet. So it'll be another three or four weeks, I think, shorter timeframe because the state just established their multiplier, so we got a news blurb on that. So I think the property tax cycle is moving along and probably within a month, we'll be able to tell you, you know, more about that primary source of revenue, you know, being etched in granite by the county. And then Merrill is constantly doing these revisions with the ISPE and Title I and so grants is an area that will fluctuate potentially right up until budget adoption. We don't get information about corporate personal property replacement tax until early July, you know, so there's a number of components of the budget that will be in a state of flux for the next few months.
It's after 10 o'clock. Mine's shut down after 10 o'clock. Mine does. I don't know about it.
Mine left a long time ago.
There you go.
Any questions for David?
Very good. Yeah, so we are going to go to close session, remember, but I'll just read the future meeting dates, May 17 regular business meeting at 7:00 PM. That will be at Ames, which is, remember that, a different location. The June 7th meeting is canceled and the June 21st regular business meeting will be at Hollywood at 7:00 PM. So at this time, is there a motion to go into close session for the purpose of discussing purchase or lease of real property for the use of the public body, including meetings held for the purpose of discussing whether a particular parcel should be acquired?
So moved.
Second.
Margie, could you call them, please?
Mr. Regan?
Aye.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Ms. Morello?
Aye.
Ms. Kleiber?
Aye.
Mr. Brackway?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Motion passed.
There'll be no action after the close session.